Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Town of Fraser's regular meeting on September 1st, 2023, at 03:00.
Katie Fisher, I'm Lynn Waldo.
Brian Serka.
I'm Al Quinn.
Katie Souls.
And follow to the end here now, trustee Gregory was not able, he's traveling, so. Like to welcome everybody here in the audience. If you have a Dusel, please sign in over here. And welcome everybody online as well. When we get to the open forum part where you guys can address the board for items that are not on the agenda, raise your hand physically in here and digitally online. I'll point you out, come up to the podium. You have to use the mic because we have people online. So come up to the mic, state your name, if you're with the Town of Fraser or not. We've got three minutes.
Get your diaper, right?
In the open forum. Same as most programs. So like, we need to amend the agenda. We're going to take away item B, Resolution 2023-09-03. And we're going to move Sarah, update on mural festival just after COVID. If I can have a motion to.
Which one are we taking?
Like, um, line from. We need to put that to bed.
What?
We need to put that to bed. We'll bring it back on October 4th. So if I can have a motion to move. Second, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Or aye, opposed? Okay, next is the consent agenda and it just has minutes from August 16th. Opposed?
So.
Second, second, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now at open forum. This is when the public can address us. So you have the three minute rule and three items that are not on the agenda. Anybody here in the building who would like to address the board for items not on the agenda?
I can't find that map anymore.
Anybody here, anybody online?
If you're online and you'd like to speak at open forum, please raise your hand.
Okay. Next is update program.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Just a real quick recap of the mural festival. Leslie, do you want to pull up my short presentation?
Oh geez, yes.
Just have some, um, quick stats and then some pretty pictures and a video and also would love to get your feedback and what you guys thought of the event.
A second. Where's your lovey place? Okay.
Oh, not the video yet.
Oh, what did you tell me?
Just, or the presentation first.
No, we went through that, sorry.
All right, so similar to last year, we had thirty artists. We had probably about ninety apply. And from those, sorry.
I'm, I'm trying to get on the chair screen. There we go.
You can go to the next one. Um, so yeah, the attendance was roughly the same. It, it's kind of hard to tell how many people actually show up to the event, like the letgoers. But we were thinking it was roughly the same. This year, because of the construction, we had to have the majority of them over here. So that was also a little different. Um, people seemed to like that, but also we had feedback on that as well. Can you go to the next slide? I know there's some pictures from the events. Going. And then we have our first, second, and third place winners. This was all the People's Choice Awards. So that's basically, everybody votes online or buys tickets. The, those proceeds go to Fraser Valley Arts. And then we also have the Artist's Choice and the Two Commission Awards. The Commission Award, the first one with the woman with the peace sign, that artist will be painting on the Hosley Building. And then the other artists will be painting in the Rec Center.
Where are the recs?
Um, I don't know yet. They're still working.
Stairwell?
Yeah, I think they were thinking about the stairwell. CBD on that one. So revenues were, were similar to last year as well. They were nineteen thousand dollars. Um, and then there is an event survey that the public did. So I would encourage everybody to look at that if you have time. Um, that's just all public feedback and we'll obviously take that into consideration when we do the event next year. Um, did you guys have any feedback for the event?
Yeah, I know that construction kind of threw a kink in it. Yeah, I have some feedback, but people really like the, the walk aspect of it. So if we can spread it out more.
Right.
Basically, it'll be easier without a board under the highway.
Right. And so when we did the Public Arts Committee recap, the general consensus was that they really liked that it was all here. Um, but I would encourage the town board to, um, maybe have, have them rethink that decision. Because I think a lot of the businesses really like the fact that it's, it's very walkable and, and is spread out, so.
I, I think there was an issue with the ones in front of, um, Amber.
Right.
Like I never got over that.
And I think if it's similar to years in, in the past, where we did have some next to the distillery and even still at Amber, even, you know, if you spread it out, then those are more apparent. It was just, it was hard. Um, it was hard with, you know, the majority of them being here.
No, I thought it was still several days.
Excellent.
I thought that was kind of cool, the, um, the guy that got commissioned at the Rec Center was a professional football player.
Yeah.
Transition?
The lady on her opening slide has, has a room of the animals in Denver.
Right, and her mural went for just over four thousand dollars, which is a record for us.
That's amazing.
It is.
That was the first one. The colors of it were amazing.
Yeah, she said all the kits really work. But then one other tip is that I heard that another larger city is asking how to emulate those events in a city.
Uh, yes, Arvada gave me a phone call and they were having an art festival this weekend and they were trying to basically replicate what we have done. So I gave them.
The Fraser should be able to self-pavement back.
Right. Um, and then one quick thing before the, um, the video is, everybody should have got an email from Lacey from Slate Communications. Um, they're, they are the team working on the branding and she would like to meet with all of you individually. And I think she sent a doodle poll to everybody. So if you can respond to that, she said she hasn't had a lot of feedback. That's it. End the video.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cool.
Thanks.
Yeah.
You probably don't deserve to turn for business purposes, but if you know, they also. Okay, next on the agenda is the Fraser donor advice fund grant administration. Michael will be.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what is here on this agenda, we are, we've had some good discussions with Megan Levine with the Grand Foundation. Um, they do provide donor advice funds for the same types of funding requests that we receive from nonprofits typically for the events of the Film Festival. Requests that we see for the Peasants Ranch Museum, requests that we've gotten from the, uh, the grandkids, childcare to support them during the COVID times there. Um, so our discussion with Megan, we kind of talked about, there's been some concerns about some budget impacts from certain requests coming through where we're not able to, you know, like recently with the Film Festival, one thing that was requested was a budget that was never shown there. What the, what the Grand Foundation's looking to provide is, um, they'll be, be able to provide the Town of Fraser with this donor advice fund, where they actually will do a lot of the fiscal analysis, understanding as far as legislation impacts where funding can come from for certain types of projects. And, um, what, a lot of times we're being asked for funds for certain things where Winter Park is also providing funds, but we don't know what that is yet. I think there's, that provides a layer there because Winter Park used the same process with the Grand Foundation. I, I think Grandy is starting this, uh, next year, right? Um, so it, it kind of puts the town in a position, I think, to be better stewards for our fund, people that come through and ask for requests of funds. It still allows us some flexibility if we want to be able to adjust and provide more if someone's really in need and there's really a local, uh, community nonprofit or service that is, um, under duress, um, that needs financial assistance and the town wants to provide that. We still maintain that flexibility, but what this is looking at doing is allowing us to work towards agreement that we would bring back to the board for approval. That allows us to, uh, use the Grand Foundation and a committee for actually reviewing the funding requests, having a window before the budget season. Um, so we can actually budget for these funds instead of being more reactive. So a lot of this includes the fiscal analysis, looking at their budget, seeing, you know, okay, what funds do you really need to be successful and what you're trying to accomplish? Uh, what funds are coming from Winter Park? Um, you know, what other good pots of money may be worth pursuing before asking the town for funds? Um, and just having a good understanding of just, you know, different things going on for the county. The county has a few resources regarding, um, different types of grant, grants that are available for certain types of activities. So what this, what we're looking at doing is establishing this with the Grand Foundation. Um, the cost for the service, I believe it's three percent for those, Megan, so, uh, three percent per year for the total amount. So it's a pretty nominal fee. Um, and it's just, it's a good practice when they're not as, um, uh, I guess, I had the word before, but when they're unbiased. This is kind of an unbiased approach to see when people are coming in with funding requests, they're doing the proper vetting to make sure that they have their ducks in a row and that the request is really legit. Versus someone coming up and asking for funds and us saying like, well, we think we have the funds, you know, and we think that they need the funds. But this is really validating those things in addition to providing them other resources. So, um, one thing is, another thing is looking at this committee, um, when this is actually, uh, these different funding requests are evaluated. Megan, you know, hopefully to jump in if I get this wrong, but when it's evaluated, it's having a committee, uh, Winter Park uses their town manager and their finance director. I think that's a good approach. Um, I was looking at, they're in that same approach. Keeps the pressure on the trustees, allows, allows us to make an informed decision and I think just be, um, set better expectations moving forward for people coming forward requesting funding. A little more vetting. So, um, that's what this is. Megan, do you want to add to that?
Hi, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Megan Levine, Director of the Grand Foundation. I think one of the important parts, when you look at a donor advice fund, is an individual foundation, corporation, municipality will give dollars to a community foundation, set up a donor advice fund to administer and facilitate your philanthropy based upon where you want it to go. It's your request. So if you just wanted to go to Fraser nonprofits or nonprofits that serve Fraser residents, it can be as restrictive as you want it to be. So the important part to note about putting it in the hands of community foundation is we do manage a lot of other municipalities and the county's donor advice fund. And so what we do is we have a simplistic online application in which nonprofits would go on. We'd have a deadline. And then after that deadline, the committee would review all the applications, make sure that they met all the requirements, their financials, things to that nature. Make sure they're in good standings with the Secretary of State as a 501(c)(3), um, those type of things. But also, are they a Fraser nonprofit? Do they serve Fraser residents? And I think that's really important because that way, when somebody comes before you and they ask for money, you know, we've already looked through the application. We've asked those questions. And the committee that you guys designate, we would have probably Amy Uger, who's our grants manager, she's over there. Um, she will be administering and facilitating the process if we move forward. And then you guys select some people you'd like to serve on it. So you're a part of the entire process. But what it does is it just allows you that unbiased and quite frankly, some pressure sometimes that you guys might get by having people come before you. As, uh, Michael alluded, we also, because we do, we do the Town of Grand Lake, Town of Winter Park, and Town of Grandy for this next year. And the Board of County Commissioners, we also know what they're asking them for, so they're not duplicating the request. And then we also know, um, if, what that dollar amount is. And once they've decided what it is, you know, we can share that, what the request was of the Town of Winter Park in this case, and what the Town of Winter Park will be funding. So I think that's a lot of the questions you guys ask. And so, um, Michael and Antoinette, I met with them and if you guys want to move forward, we're happy to do this service for you. The IRS does require that we assess the fee based on donor advice funds. Um, ninety-nine percent of the time, I will tell you, we do not keep that money. We give it back because usually there's more requests asked than dollars to give out. So we usually put that three percent back into the fund. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
How do you cover your costs?
We pretty much, between our grand pass sales, which thank you, the town is very gracious and does, you know, participate in that, uh, portion of that, we have an endowment that helps cover our salary.
So are we as a board, are we putting a dollar amount into this or are we?
So that dollar amount, I think, will be identified during the budget season. So we'll get there. Um, and then once we have that dollar amount, um, well, Megan, we had talked about this. Maybe it's allowing the, opening the application period up. Um, we had talked about October fifteenth maybe as a deadline for people to submit, for organizations to submit their funding requests, uh, October fifteenth, which is, you know, right towards the middle, beginning of our budget season. We have a good understanding of what funding requests can make. And then we can adjust our, our budget accordingly to provide for those requests or not provide for those requests depending on what comes in. We can have a good evaluation of the funding requests and, uh, and be able to put a dollar amount on it. I mean, you know, we've, we've done anywhere from, I think, fifteen thousand to twenty thousand, um, but you just never know what's going to come around. So, um, that's, I think, the, the good consensus that we had during our meeting is we can put this out to the public. We can, um, I think Megan talked about engaging these, these nonprofits that have done these funding requests in the past and letting them know that this is the new process. And here's the application.
That is a service we provide. If you would tell us who has come before you, that you guys have granted and/or not granted. And we're happy to send an email out saying this is the process moving forward. Um, one other thing is that because we open the application doesn't mean a dollar amount has to be set. It just means you're accepting applications for your 2024 giving. So it certainly doesn't have to be listed there. If you ever wanted to put a maximum amount that you guys would fund, you could do that or an average range or something to that nature. Or like in the case of the county commissioners, and sorry if I get verbal sometimes, um, they're specific in theirs. They want health and human service organizations, um, education and environment. Those are their three scopes. So sometimes arts and culture and sports and recreation can get left out, although I'd argue they probably fall under one of the others. But with that being said, um, Grand Lake is nonprofits in Grand Lake that or serve Grand Lake residents. Grandy's going to go the same direction if you want to be more generic like that. So I, I think that we can still open it and because we have an online process, we've flown another application. It's super easy. We can open it on the fifteenth. That is when the Town of Winter Park's deadline is as well. Um, Grand Lake and the county commissioners are November fifteenth and Grandy's looking at December first.
Well, how much have we spent on donations the past three years each year?
Uh, I believe it was fifteen thousand last year. Um, I think it was fifteen, fifteen to twenty thousand this year so far.
But that excludes that shot into the, um, grandkids and cut fifty thousand.
Right, that's fifty thousand. I might say it before.
The, the grand, so let's tip that down, so we know what to base it on. Uh, the only thing I don't like about it is the, the board loses. And I hate to say, I hate to say us, you know, we are the representative because of our community and we should have, that's why.
I, I totally understand that. And that's why we allow the committee to be as large as you want it to be. The only thing I would say is that if you do half of your town council, that becomes an open forum and a public meeting. So you might want to look at that. But you certainly could have whomever you want. Um.
Like, I also don't like the, this hard set deadline because we would have lost a lot of good things, events that have come to us on, you know, that spur of the moment. So I think, I'm not opposed to it, but I think, I think that, to me, I would want it to be more flexible and, and have, I, I don't think, I think that should be board members. I mean, we are, we are the, we're elected by.
Sure. You can choose whoever you want.
The people's money that are, we were elected by the people, but their money is.
Sure. You can, you can select whoever you want. We don't mandate any of that. Uh, we just ask, we have to have one staff person serving on it, not to give you context, to do the due diligence to be able to vet those applications for you, but it doesn't mean that we're going to override anything you would want. Um, your points are very valid and that's why sometimes when people do look at donor advice ones, they do make them more, um, open. And they basically say it's going to be X number of dollars and you keep the application, you could do quarterly deadlines or you could just keep it open. And as applications come in, we work with whomever, but that could happen all year round, but that's up to you.
Megan, with the other communities that you work with through this, does it come back to their council, to their boards for final approval after?
It does. So basically after, in the case, if you want to use Winter Park, all of them are different, just so you know. In, in the case of Winter Park, uh, their town manager and their finance person gets together with Amy in this case and they'll go over, Amy's already read through all the applications. I'll go through them. Um, we can look at it based on historic funding. We can look at it based on their requests versus the money they have in the bank, all these type of different things, and give our, our feedback, but it's really up to them what they want to fund. Then they take it to their council, put it as an agenda item and then they vote on it. We create a spreadsheet and a matrix for their council and everything.
So, so does, does their council get information on the ones that they didn't choose?
Oh, they get the whole, everybody. And to be honest, unless the criteria is really scrutinized or their financials are way out of whack, like whether it be very profitable or the other way, you always have to look and, um, but the spreadsheet includes everybody. So I haven't really seen many people denied unless they just didn't put the fat money.
Or is this a board recommendation, embedded recommendation for that financial analysis?
Correct, but it's up to you as the Town of Fraser, council, staff, whomever, to make those decisions.
What's the pleasure of the board on this? Anybody else have any other?
Well, the, the term, the July first term doesn't really fit with council calendars.
July first? This, this is just a draft, I'm sorry. This is just a, a draft.
It's not a final template by any means. The dates would be if you wanted the calendar, we could do that, we could.
I, I guess what we're.
Election time is what I mean.
What, what we're looking for is we move forward.
Yeah, I think so.
We can iron out, we can iron out.
We can iron out the details.
The details later. And I'm totally fine with that, but I still think that board members should be, plus, we should have a view of it as well.
And you can have all the applications too. We can create a scoring system.
The Winter, Winter Park Film Festival happening in Fraser, Colorado. And, and we have this hard set deadline. So there's a perfect example of something that's amazing that's going to happen in our community that we want to have. So that's, those are my only comments.
But no, but in closing, just, that is a really good point in which you can all, always set aside some ancillary dollars for those type of things that come up. And it can still be administered and facilitated to do the whole process. It just takes away that, um, precedent of them coming before you regularly. But that's up to you. We're just here, we're just here to provide the service.
Yes.
As long as we can figure out, maybe that, amazing event. Okay. Do you need a motion? Everybody's thumbs up on this?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, babe.
Okay, next is a public hearing and impossible action, amending chapter nineteen of the Fraser Municipal Code, removing the Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District, adding the Riverwalk District and requiring Grand Fork Commercial on Highway forty and Clayton Court in the new district. Okay, and I'd like to go ahead and. Open this public hearing.
He's the same. Okay, I can't like co-host.
Do you want to vote in the public hearing?
Yeah, so you already do. That's him gonna mute. And probably Ben too.
Uh, I can't. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, so yeah, I can go ahead and get into the, the staff presentation if you'd like. Um, okay, so, yeah, so just for introduction, I'm Will Charles with, uh, with Baseline. Uh, thanks for the town. Uh, and I'm going to go through a little presentation for you guys. Um, and then let me know if, uh, you have any questions. It is a pretty dense but short presentation, so, uh, stop me if anything doesn't make sense or if you have any questions along the way, um, during it. But, yeah, so to get into kind of what we're going through, uh, this is a amendment to chapter nineteen, uh, for the Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District, um, to a, a new proposed district, which is the Riverwalk Standard Zone District. Uh, so just kind of where it started and where we're headed, um, on the right is a picture from your Downtown Fraser Strategic Plan, um, which was kind of the first iteration of this Riverwalk District, um, where you can kind of see it as mainly focused around that, um, you know, Clayton Court, Highway forty, Doc Suzie Avenue area of town. Um, and then from there, uh, there was, uh, this Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District, which was formed, which is the picture on the left of the screen, um, where you can kind of see a gray, uh, blue hatched line over top of your, um, business zone district. Um, so that's currently where this Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay, um, District, uh, is, is situated. And then kind of getting into next, you know, what, what the issues with the current, currently is and what, kind of where it's heading. So with the Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District, the first thing is that the July nineteenth Board Trustees Meeting, there was a direction to take a look at this area and consider changes to it. Additionally, earlier this year, the Clayton Court area of the overlay district was rezoned from the medium-density, single-family residential district to the business district, which allowed, or which made it where the RMU overlay district is only encompassing one zone district, which is that business district. So there's only one underlying district underneath that. The next part being that there were some inconsistencies between that business district and the Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District. And with those, it was challenging to know which of the two standards took precedence and which one did not. So with, with this change, hopefully all of that should be addressed. And then the last one being direction to look at ground floor commercial requirements along Highway forty and Clayton Court. So, yeah, so really at the end of the day, it's mainly about cleaning up an overlay district that probably doesn't really have as much necessity as it did before, since it's only encompassing one zone district. And then also to take another crack at these commercial requirements. So getting into what we're actually proposing for the changes, these are just kind of the overall bullet points, and we'll get into each one a little more individually on later slides. But the first one is replacing any language that says overlay district with that standard Riverwalk District. So that one's pretty straightforward. The next one is making sure that this Riverwalk District is its own standalone district, so it doesn't have references to other districts in there. It references its own standards for regulation purposes. The next one is creating those district standards for the area. So this is, you know, setbacks, lock coverage, height, and things of that nature. The next is that ground floor commercial, which we've talked about a bit, and then adjustments to that use table to allow for additional uses with the district. All right. So the first change, the portion at the top of this slide that's not underlined, is the current intent for the Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District, which, you know, besides changing it to the Riverwalk District, has remained intact. Basically, this is the goals and objectives of the district. So when someone reviews it, they know what you're looking for in that area. So with this, after planning commission, you know, it seemed like there was more areas where we could encourage this type of, the vision of the area. So we added in a couple extra sentences here to talk about ground floor commercial and kind of the, the layout of sites on how, on how the community envisions projects laying out. So with that ground floor commercial pushed towards the front of projects, and then that parking, you know, located behind or hidden from that right of way. And then also to create, you know, again, reemphasizing that walkable nature of the area. All right. So this is a very big chart and has a lot of words on it. But I'll, I'll go ahead and just kind of summarize this for you. So it has changed a little bit since that, that planning commission meeting. The main thing being adding this, so basically, sorry, I'm gonna take a step back. For, for this, there are, basically, there's the single-family residential, which is just a conditional use in this area, which is really there because there's a lot of single-family residential and duplexes in that area that were basically considered non-conformity in these Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay before. So the intent is not to have new single-family or, you know, low-density residential in this area, but to give these, those current developments standards, you know, in case they want to do an addition to their home or things like that, not necessarily to create new ones. So that's why there are all these single-family and duplex standards in this chart. For anything that's not those, though, so any of your commercial projects in the area or, you know, multifamily residential, they would follow these all other uses or mixed use, which the intent is to be fairly flexible with. So for for the front side and rear yard setbacks, it would be a zero-foot setback, but that could be determined to, at the site plan phase. The intent of that being that if someone wants to push their building, say thirty feet back from the property line, you know, the planning commission, as well as the board of trustees at that site plan phase, could require them to bring those, you know, closer to the street to meet the requirements of that district. And it's linked back to the intent for the district with those requirements. So that's slightly different from the planning commission. What was, talking about planning question and then the recommendation from planning commission, the main one, or the biggest one from that is this rear yard setback. It was originally eighteen feet, similar to what's in the majority of your other zone districts, and it was reduced to that, that no minimum as well. Other than that, the only other one, and I, I apologize, actually, it's incorrect in this slide, is this all other mixed uses for open space. So the other direction at, at planning commission was that this fifteen percent might be high for commercial uses. So it's actually five percent in the, in the current ordinance. So I apologize for that error on this page. Any other question, or any questions before I move forward from this slide?
So what's that number on the rear stuff guy?
The rear setback is a no minimum. Sorry, I don't, I couldn't actually hear the, I couldn't hear the question.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So this is essentially, the majority of this is pretty much word from word for what's in your Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District. So the, the first part is new, though. And this is the beef of the ground floor commercial requirement. And so basically what it says is that for the first twenty feet in depth of a structure along Highway forty or Clayton Court, it would need to have, it would need to be ground floor commercial. So with that, you know, obviously you can have some, you know, interior portions of the building, like hallways and things like that, but the beef of that first twenty feet would need to be that ground floor commercial. And then getting into the other bullet points, this is talking about the density requirements for the district. So currently, in the business district, as well as the Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay, it has this twenty dwelling units per acre maximum. We kept that the same in this district with, with the goal of, you know, when someone comes in to develop with these multifamily residential components, they look to do one of these other two density bonuses along with it. So the first one, which allows you the, the most density, is including deed-restricted affordable housing in your, in your development. So with a minimum of twenty percent of the residential units being deed-restricted affordable housing, you can get up to sixty dwelling units per acre. So effectively tripling that, that maximum density. And then the other one, which is not tied to affordable housing, but it is tied to increasing that commercial activity, would be if you have forty percent of the ground floor of your building commercial, you can get up to forty units per acre. So with that, keep in mind that there are, you know, areas in this, areas in that Riverwalk Mixed Use Overlay District currently that are not on Clayton Court and Highway forty. So those properties could still also get these benefits, even though they're not on those two streets that are really being targeted for that ground floor commercial activity.
Sorry, well, I thought we had changed that deed restricted to workforce housing, not affordable housing. The idea is to have workers living downtown.
So having it workforce housing instead of area median, or tied to area median income?
Right, because area median income in this side of the county is completely different than West Grand. And when you look at the area median income, you're not gonna have people from West Grand living here that work in West Grand.
Okay.
And so, do we know, or maybe a little bit, you may know, is there an annual updated AMI for the Fraser Valley, Fraser specifically?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's updated on an annual basis?
I thought it was Grand County as a whole, and not divided east or west.
And that's about the chaff requirements?
The trouble with not having any AMI tied to it is that. Yeah, it's market rate. If the workers can afford to live there, they'll be the ones living there. If they can't afford to live there, they can't live there. So if you're paying a worker fifteen dollars an hour, and you want to charge two thousand dollars a month, they're not gonna be able to afford it. So if you're charging, if you're paying your workers fifty dollars an hour, they're gonna afford it. If we do restricted affordable housing, we run into the problem of having people that are thirty percent, twenty percent, fifty percent AMI, that means they don't have a job. Right, so AMI on this side of the valley, the AMI, from what I've heard, is thirty-seven thousand single, fifty-seven thousand as a couple. So eighty percent of AMI means you're, what, sixty-seven thousand? So the average person's making sixty-seven thousand on this side of the valley. But that's pretty low. I mean, eight, sorry, eighty percent, you'd get forty thousand. If you get forty thousand, you're talking to the average person in Fraser, in Winter Park, like forty thousand. That's pretty, that's a pretty low number.
I think it's DOLA that has a demographic department that has today AMI.
Yeah, the chaff, I guess, chaff works to build, but they publish the income limits that are about every year.
Yeah.
I mean, the town, we, we employ several, we have several employees that are at eighty percent and just below eighty percent.
Right. So how many do you have?
Best guess? Eight to ten?
So that's a few.
I was just here at the town.
But right now, the housing people that do workforce housing, the apartments and the guy building across, I mean, that's where it goes. Their biggest concern is being able to fill the houses with the requirement of AMI.
Yeah. But they have some of those low percentages of AMI versus an average of sixty-five or whatever.
In our AMI phase, in West Grand, it's maybe not worth.
Well, that we don't know for sure.
No, it is. The chaff of those, the entire county, so it's everybody combined. So West Grand brings us down, and Hot Cuffer brings us down on average pay, which makes it harder to fill the units. So I know we talked about this.
There are demographics into each town.
Right, but when you go to do workforce housing, then if you're gonna say the average median income for Fraser, then we need to know what the average median income for Fraser is. You leave it at workforce housing, if somebody that works in the town or in the area, but they're held at Winter Park, maybe, thirty-two hours or more a week, plus that are here nine months or twelve months of the year, whatever you want to stipulate, then they have to put a workforce person in there instead of just, just not work.
So eighty percent AMI for a one-bedroom unit is fourteen oh one a month. We have one of our employees that are looking at moving into an eighty percent AMI unit.
Right, no, and I'm glad we have him. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't need that person. So for workforce, workforce housing, because you want workers living in the downtown, there, that's just anybody living downtown.
So we have our regulations set up now to establish what that means for Victoria Village, what that's gonna work like for us and our expectations. And then what do we do with those people that have the workforce, that are aging, that live from the, that are retired?
Well, and that's, that's part of the issue that ours has experienced with this department. So it's hoping that there was a segment of the retirement community to pull from. Maybe somebody who's living on social security, really qualified for thirty or forty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI. He's found some. I'm hoping that he has more luck than what he's had. For him, a pen for the church to do another help house soon, so hoping for some progress. But I mean, for Victoria Village, it's largely gonna reference the state, especially with the higher life funding for the four percent or the nine percent. And any state funding is gonna, it's gonna mandate that the AMIs are set per chaff. So, you know, one thing that we could look at adding, and, and I'm not sure this is defined in our code, really define for this part in our code, what that is. I can't recall if that's actually required them to work thirty hours a week, but we could, if you wanted to make it more workforce-oriented, we could do that. I'd be fine with both the two. Maybe some AMI.
Right.
Thirty-hour a week worker. Eighty percent AMI.
Can you do one or the other? So are you suggesting for now that we just have work requirements?
Yeah, we have to.
And no AMI?
Well, we can have AMI, but we gotta consider affordable, it's workforce housing. That's, I know we talked about it.
So it's more what it's, just what it's called?
I think, I think it accomplishes what you're trying to do. If somebody working at either side AMI, it's not gonna be working a remote job from the front range, most likely.
Right.
They're gonna be working more of a mobile-based job.
Well, if the average person's supposed to spend thirty percent of what they make on housing, that number you gave me of fourteen hundred means they make fifty-seven thousand.
You know, I would, I would caution, if you add this kind of workforce component into that, is there's, you know, an AMI deed restriction is, is pretty simple, because that's tied to how much you can rent out or, you know, sell these, these, you know, units for. Whereas a workforce requirement now is something that needs this kind of extra enforcement component to it. So that, that would be my only caution about kind of considering something in addition like that to it.
And you're not wrong, you know, I just think that it's probably, it's probably something we want. And did our agreement for this, for causing, did it require the local workforce to have a certain amount of towers working in the area? I think so. Yeah, I think it was thirty-two hours a week, minimum of nine months.
Sorry. Greg Beckler, Belkirk, by his methods, doing Coastal Gunman. Our deed restriction draft, which hasn't been finalized yet, is thirty hours per week minimum in Grand County, and then also the eighty percent AMI restriction. I would just note, like, we, there's a lot of alternative funding resources that have kind of changed their lower-income metrics to be, I think you guys have experiences with Victoria Village, like, between, up to one-twenty AMI. And I think that's, I was actually having a conversation today with a woman who, the deed-restricted unit we have at Coast Lakes, fourteen hundred, it's great. But for an individual, you have to be making under fifty thousand for a two-person household under fifty-six. So there's a lot of people who make fifty to eighty thousand. And the next option is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar one-bedroom. It's market rate. And so I don't know if you need to address it with this code or whatever, but there definitely is a big segment of people that are between eighty and one-twenty that can't afford market rate stuff up here. So that would be nice.
You could increase it. Right, eighty percent. Hearing all the numbers, the business, I know what people can and can't afford.
We're losing our workforce on a daily basis. And, and we're gaining people that aren't working, that are trying to move in. Because they have, they have money coming in from somebody else, or they don't show any income, so they're able to move in. There's a lot of cash businesses out there. So that's, I just want to make sure that we cover this, because this is a pretty substantial part of our town. So that's, I just want to make sure that we cover this because this is a pretty substantial part of our town. And it's, it's, you know, going to be the highlight when people come into and see the town, we want it to be a place to act with people, people that are. If we listed it at one-twenty AMI, it gives us a little more room to, like, kind of negotiate with. Build it, maybe they can build more units because it's a little bit more, I mean, it runs around. And in fifteen, I like that, it gives people a chance to improve their jobs, and if they get married and have kids, or adopt kids, or whatever routine is, they're able to stay in workforce housing and move up through it as the family grows. If we make it, try it, eighty percent, and then AMI doesn't drop enough, we're, we're losing families. So I admit that, I, I just want to make sure we have it, it covers. If you look at a hundred years from today, what, what's it going to look like in Frazier, not what it looks like today? What would it look like in a hundred years, what do you want it to look like? I want a beautiful town, lots of productive people that enjoy living here and working. That's what I grew up with, that's what I like to see.
So if you get like eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, is there a way to allow for a week of, I mean, we had GHS waiting program? Uh, in terms of when the people are looking at applications, so that if someone is, um, in that lower income category, I don't.
Are you, are you, sorry, are you trying to exclude the hundred eighty?
So, no, not the, well, I'm not necessarily excluding anything.
But you'd want to do a hundred and twenty? Or a hundred and twenty?
Okay. But, you know, that there's, is some way to give a little extra for those people that are making less, I don't know. What's the answer?
Exactly, right. Yeah, that's something they want to add. Was there, did you go to projects?
I would, I would say, I mean, if you did a hundred and twenty, gets you forty per acre, you're going to have a lot of people go after that one. Because sixty per acre is tough anyway with the forty-five foot height limit. And if you, you know, do a really, big incentive for eighty percent, and a slightly less incentive for one-twenty, I think people would take advantage of that. And that would be a good middle income segment to cover.
We still have to figure out what the unit is, other than perhaps. Yeah, we're good.
No. I do like that idea, Greg. And I was wondering about forty, um, units per acre. Just the ground floor commercial, isn't that what we're passing, less than four?
It says forty percent commercial.
As opposed to.
On the ground floor.
As opposed to the first twenty feet.
Versus the entire first floor?
So twenty foot, it's the depth requirement for like the frontage commercial space. If they want to do, some of those, like, if we're looking at Clayton Court, some of those apartments are pretty deep. And if you're looking, if you look at like a, once you look at the open space requirements, it's now five percent less than that. And you, if we do, if you're doing parking on site, I mean, that's typically going to take about thirty-five percent of your space there. So your remaining space, forty percent of that, we can calculate it made sense, help incentivize a little more commercial, but not too much that it can't be supported by the market. And still allow for some ground floor residential, so you don't have to worry about things like elevator costs and things of that nature. So it, it helps it, I think, I think it's a good balance as far as what you can do on Clayton Court and this other area of the town.
So that forty percent commercial isn't necessarily the street side of the development?
I mean, most likely, let me. That'd be, yeah, because they're required to have the street side being commercial.
Yeah.
It would be time to, you know, expand that, make it a larger space there.
But the lot on, on East is really deep, but, you know, it's, it's much better to have the commercial up front, and then the parking company can out there.
So I guess from what I'm hearing, one proposal could be eighty percent AMI for sixty units per acre. Add or below a hundred and twenty percent AMI, fifteen units per acre?
It's, it's, it's still those people that tend to build housing if you're moving up into.
I, I'd say the four, forty units per acre.
I think forty is fine, I'm just wondering, like, as you move up in tiers, like, you build like sixty acres, you've never sixty units, you no longer need the forty percent. All right, or because you've now passed the forty bar, you need the forty percent. You know, I think you do with your war, I guess, type of budget to. So if I remember that West Building. Forty units per acre, like, twenty percent AMI, I think that sounds pretty reasonable.
And another, if I could throw out another idea, this is Ben Thurston with Baseline. Rather than, than creating two different levels of, of density, you could, you could leave it at sixty dwelling units per acre, and just, uh, actually divide up the twenty percent, this is, this only applies to twenty percent of the units, just as a reminder. It's not, it's not the whole project, it's just twenty percent of the units. But you could, you could say ten percent of the units would have to be at eighty percent, uh, at or below eighty percent. And, and then another ten percent would have to be at or below a hundred and twenty percent. So you could divide up that percentage of units, um, rather than looking at a, a graduated density.
Ossling boys, we need the.
I mean, I think, I think that's a good idea, but I think if the goal is to build things for people between eighty and one-twenty, that won't accomplish it. No. If, if there's a process to build for one-twenty people to do that, if there's a smaller requirement for eighty to get forty, or a bigger requirement for eighty to get sixty units per acre, you know, whatever's not restricted is going to be market rate. Uh, uh, you know, I think to hit that middle income, you got to. A density for that income.
So I like, you want to add? I like the, I like the eighty and one-twenty, I, I do appreciate Ben's thought, but I think this way we often develop, develop into specific pricing. Different, or so, what we're looking at is, and if we have to kind of hit the one-twenty mark, or I'm kind of at the eighty mark, I can get twenty-one minutes, so it's a bit more.
I don't really have anything. Unfortunately, it's just not, there's no easy answers, just you know, it's all a bit shakeout.
All right, Ben. I'm agreeing with Parnell on this one. Yeah, I think I would graduate quickly. I, I don't know what happens to the forty percent of ground floor, though. I wouldn't mind seeing that, off of both before we end up. I don't know what that does to numbers.
Yeah. But I can't really.
Well, they'll still, they'll still be required to do the twenty feet depth.
Right, right, because if you're trying to squeeze eighty units on the, because I mean, you are always going to be twenty, so you can get them rolled, units behind it. If we want, we want some main floor units for sure, because we want them to be wheelchair accessible and everything like that, but, um, you know, we also know essentially mainstream businesses are with just twenty feet, only across a residential space, not in restaurants.
So the other thing to keep in mind, too, for, between this, you know, forty percent commercial area and this twenty feet in depth, um, is that not, both don't apply to all properties, some, take a step back real quick in this presentation, but, um, so the properties, you know, along Clayton Court and Highway forty, um, actually, I think there's actually a better slide. So the properties along Clayton Court and Highway forty, you know, the ones in red here, are the ones where that twenty feet in depth would be required. But there are other properties outside those that are in, you know, the proposed new district, that would be able to get a benefit and encourage that ground floor commercial, uh, even though it's not required of them to do ground floor commercial. Uh, so there are two different kind of things at play with those two different requirements.
There's not a lot, but I see on there that isn't forty frontage at Clayton Court. I don't know if I saw it, the, the stuff that I parked there, I think it's East. The back half, East.
Well, can you go back to that map?
I think that's off.
Show the map again, Will.
So, no, got it, but it's all of that, too.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can see my mouse, but the current RMU district, you know, comes all the way down here to Mill Avenue, uh, goes along, uh, the railroad, and then up to Park, and then kind of meanders, you know, the backside, uh, along the river, uh, uh, down to here. Uh, so it, it covers a wider area than just this Clayton Court and Highway forty.
I'd like if, well, I mean, I, to be honest, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the properties that aren't touching Clayton Court and Highway forty. So to encourage the business, coming on the ground floor, seeing those other spots. I want the density of buildings as on where the red is basically, but. So I don't think the forty percent matters that much. Unless you guys want, because this is kind of threw up the whole.
Well, I kind of, you already have some, it's already threw up, so I'd like if you, they get bonus doing more things. It's a bigger town. Taxes are relatively, I'm paid for, lots of roads, and so we have to have a good spot commercial.
Hold on, this first area, the one, full of, now, torn down with this forty percent. I think I'd like to see the businesses all over too, though, so. I like more commercial space.
And that forty percent, that was calculated when the, uh, when the, uh, open space requirement was fifteen percent.
So is that correct?
So, so it's easier to reset forty percent.
Right.
So you could balance it to what you want. I mean, I guess I'm, I'm fine having the forty percent for both the four unit and sixty unit, and I'll do a one-twenty AMI.
Yeah. Comment what you want.
Yeah, I'm counting out on this part, eighty, part one forty. You can hear me.
I want local workers, I like the work.
If you're just joining us, if you could just sign in over here, there's a sign-in sheet, if you have that.
The work requirements, priority of the work requirement. And that would include people that weren't working, that are retiring or become handicapped, they would stay, still stay eligible.
Right.
Is that in our rates?
Thirty hours a week, just so you can match.
It used to be thirty-two, I was confused about the thirty.
I thought, I always thought it was thirty. Sorry, thirty minutes, so, thirty minutes. I, I thought.
We could, we have our rates, the two jobs, we got our retirees and people. We do, we do, I don't know.
I mean, it's just way a lot to, to everybody. Very workforce housing. I think, if you were. So it was you, 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 and you were. You want to.
You're, you're fine.
I think as long as it's workforce required, I'd go one-twenty.
Yeah. So there's three. So we're getting rid of the eighty, from the sixty units? Okay, so then there's really no incentive to go up to sixty, to go past forty. That's it. If we want density.
Well, you can say the one-twenty, go to sixty. Right, I would, six, man, we change, like, small dogs, they're never coming. We change the unit is, right, I've been forty, I'm on the project, really tough here. So if you said sixty, that's super creative.
Right.
Like that hovering units. Maybe let me find a third with my hat station.
So to clarify, because there's going to be a lot of percentages and numbers. The hundred we're looking at may be changing that requirement, Will, can you put that slide that you saw before that have the percentage? We're looking at providing, uh, forty units per acre for a hundred and twenty percent, for twenty percent of those units being a hundred and twenty percent AMI, is that what we're saying? Who's clear on this?
Thirty to thirty-two.
Right. Or retire rate type of thing.
Right. Thirty-two, do thirty-two percent.
And is it up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI?
It, it'd be just like this, so the income at or below.
Okay, okay.
And that's, you know, if you're looking at just Frazier, that's probably a closer.
Yeah, we can do, the closer we get to where we are, the better, so. So throwing parts of them.
Obviously, we're going to rework this.
Yes.
Okay.
So Michael, just.
We continue on?
Yes. What's that, Will?
Yeah, just to make sure I'm following along, so we have the hundred and twenty percent, forty dwelling units per acre. Was there a third tier or just the two tiers that we're looking at?
I think it's just, we're getting rid of the eighty percent AMI.
A hundred and twenty, like, thirty-two hours of work for retiring. So the left is moving, it's in there, moving from into retiring or anything.
And they had fallen, as a word, word of worker.
Oh, physically working at a location within Grand County.
I would like the market district. Yeah. I think that's what he said, he goes right this way here.
And it wasn't twenty, it didn't really.
Yeah.
So the open space, um, by fifteen, five percent. We talked about it with the French, I think Paul, he made that recommendation? Or not, in a sense of the, but through this discussion?
Yeah, we did make it as recommendation, and the reason we did five percent is to encourage the commercial and the, on the main floor. And by the time you do commercial and adding, um, the open space, and if you're, you couldn't do it, you couldn't have a parking in the back of the building. And downtown, we could, you don't need as much open space, because that's what the environment around the town is for. And open space is generally for snow storage, is what we've talked about, and open this, uh, it was mainly for snow storage, except for most of the property is covered by a building, you're not going to need as much open space for snow storage. It'll be on the sides of the building in the back. Yeah. You don't have a big parking lot, you wouldn't file.
Yep.
I didn't know how it came to that, but I think that's what it's.
So will be able to accommodate snow storage? Do you have to? You're in on a lot of work.
They're often.
They have, they have to. They're, they're required to, to meet the snow storage regardless.
Okay. Nothing to do with open space.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Hey, let's.
All righty. Okay.
Do we need, um, a loo for parking, parking garage, you feel? Does that need to be included or is that just a? I think that's.
Yeah, so I mean, a garage would generally be part of that structure, right? So that would, the setbacks and things like that would all fall in with that, is that what you're? So that would, the setbacks and things like that would all fall in with that, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking, look, so if we put a parking garage in between forty and Clayton Court, for example, behind businesses. In the middle of businesses, um, those on the east side of Clayton Court, could they pay a fee loop for what their parking requirement is to pay, how pay? Yeah, that's, I mean, Will and Ben, you guys can kind of help me with this, but it's, it sounds like when we get through this kind of parking study that we're looking to bring forward to the board. Um, if the consolidated parking is a recommendation, if they have a good location and where that can make sense. And we can move that forward, have the land dedicated to that. Excuse me, um. That could just be uh, like a code change that we could allow for, um, for those as development occurs.
Yeah, some sort of shared parking agreement or something like that?
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily need to be in this zoning, or that's correct?
That's correct, yeah. This, that's, that's well beyond the scope of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay. Um, so before I move on from this slide, just wanted to make sure, is there any questions on the uh, you know, twenty feet depth portion? Uh, I know we used it kind of as an, as a visual aid, uh, but I don't know if there's any questions on, on that actual language itself. Okay. All right, so getting into some more fun graphs, um, the, this chart is basically showing um, the uh, the uses where there was a discrepancy between. What was shown in the Riverwalk mixed use overlay district, um, and the business district. Um, so all of those had some form of either permitted, a licensed, or a conditional use. Um, in the business district, but had, uh, they were unlisted in your Riverwalk mixed use overlay. So the way this is written is basically to allow the most flexibility, um, for, you know, unique or interesting projects. Um, and not limiting the use cases, um, from, you know, you know, asking or applying for uh, the ability to build in that area. Um, so uh, for all the uses listed on here, uh, the recommendation would be to take those uses, um, that are currently un- unlisted. Um, and make them conditional, um, which means that they would come before uh, this body uh, for final approval. Um, with the sole difference being marijuana, which is a licensed use in all your other districts where it's allowed. Um, so leaving that as that similar licensed use. Um, the only, sorry, the only one that's not included, uh, in the uh, Riverwalk mixed use overlay that is in the business district is also that, um. RV parks, which we'll uh, left as unlisted. Any questions on that?
Where, where are liquor stores?
Uh, so this isn't all encompassing of every use that's allowed in the district, these are just the ones where there was a discrepancy. Um, so I believe a liquor store is allowed in your business district and would also be allowed on this one.
I just wondered why marijuana was different than liquor store.
It wasn't listed before, and now it's listed as. So the, uh.
There is no other, no one with business that isn't licensed.
Right, but it was just, it was not allowed in our area.
Now, yeah.
Could be, it's a license.
Yeah, here, I can, I can pull up your uh, code real quick and show you.
One thing that needs to add to that I'm looking at is storage of vehicles or parks during operations near downtown.
I think that's right. As we have learned.
So that's something to consider.
What's that?
The second from the top on the right side, storage of vehicles or parts thereof from controlling operations, used car locks, rental operations.
Again, it's conditional, but these factors.
So. There's nobody currently. There were. No, it's not, so that's those all vehicles that are working. That's part of the model, storage of vehicles controlling operations. No, it's on the operation. But we didn't for a long time.
No, sorry.
Yeah, we've got.
So total vehicles, yeah, we're talking about typically, yeah. We could modify that statement if you wanted to remove the storage vehicles and parts thereof controlling operations. Are you okay with moving on? It looks like you're trying to, I'm not sure it's.
It just, yeah.
Are you pulling something else up, Will, or?
Yeah, sorry, I, I was letting, I was letting the discussion play out before I pulled it over, um, yeah, so this is your, this is your.
Uh, we're just gonna ramble on.
We can't actually see anything different, Will, we're seeing the same thing.
That's, apologies, I mean, uh. Let me stop sharing and share again. Okay, uh, so this is your, this is your current ordinance?
Is anybody here able to read that?
No.
No.
Can't see anything?
So, I, I think, I think I can cover this, so we had two zoning overlays that staff served it for a while, then you could choose either or. The business only provided for. Uh, the Riverwalk mixed use this year, so I, I think in the intent when it was created, they didn't see the need to double that allowance, because this is now recently. In a series of events, we've hardened up the more, um. The term.
More, more just a lot of control of the rest of the district.
So that's where we've been working, so it was provided for already, at least we thought, um, but now it's. It's provided for.
Yeah, I did give up on showing my, I, I don't, I don't know what's going wrong with it, but um, yeah, basically, there's a, but pretty much anything you would consider a commercial use was allowed in your business district. Um, and those uh, would remain the same, again, these are the ones that are different. Um, I did look at uh, liquor stores, and it looks like those just fall under commercial retail as a whole. Um, and so it would, it would, it would be the same thing in this one. Any other questions for this page before we jump, ju- jump forward? Um, so this one is something that's currently already in the code. Um, the only addition is the underline since it's at the end. Uh, and so this is in your nineteen four one ninety, uh, so it's your building design, um, which kind of adds some more architectural details and things like that. Um, so we left it the, the same basically as what's in there, but added, um. You know, and another kind of point in here about pushing that ground floor commercial towards the street. Um, so it's just another, another location where, um, you know, reviewers as well as this body, you know, can lean on. Uh, the code to say this is the intent of the district, that we want this ground floor commercial. You know, towards those streets and, and, you know, the high visibility areas of the. All righty. Um, so with that, um, the only other change that was made, um, from uh, the planning commission meeting was adding. Um, this top portion from uh, or top portion to the ordinance, this isn't something that's different in the code, it's in the actual ordinance itself. Um, which basically, uh, is kind of a carry, or carries the code from one side to the other. Um, for those properties that are in the Riverwalk mixed use overlay district currently. Um, so they would still be treated under that, under that previous code until the new Riverwalk district is established. Uh, and this is something we haven't really talked about during this meeting, but uh, basically, once that Riverwalk mixed use overlay district, uh, that language is removed. Um, the, the zoning map itself still needs to be changed, so no properties automatically switch from one district to the other. Uh, it has to go through the rezoning process, um, and so that would be the next step, uh. To come before uh, uh, planning commission as well as this group would be, um, us working through that rezoning process. Uh, to rezone those properties that are currently zoned, you know, business district with the Riverwalk mixed use overlay, uh, to the new Riverwalk district. So is there any questions on that? All right. All righty, so that's the end of the presentation, uh, unless we need to jump back to anything, or you have any questions?
Okay, please. Anything else from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open up a couple of comments, anybody from the public who wants to make any comments on this specific item. Here, once again, if you're, if new people come in, so if you're here in the building, raise your hand, I'll point you out, come up to the podium, state your name, that you live in the town of Frasier or not, you get three minutes. To speak, um, you don't have to repeat what, um, your spouse or your best friend said, you can say, I agree with. I think I have a poll up, shit, that's here. I agree with Pollak, and then move on, and then say more on, on that.
Hey, everyone, Kevin Ripken, Bicing Investments, uh. I think I'm technically a resident now, because I spend more time up here than I spend there. Um, one thing I want to make sure, I think this is great and a really good job, and it's really exciting. I want to make sure the language is really clear, um, and concise, um, there's two points that I saw in the code. Um, that are just confusing candidly, and I think they're gonna lead it in a bad place when people are looking at this. One is in the first, uh, intent, it says parking should be positioned behind the primary structure. I think we can clean that up, because what is the primary structure? Um, if we're looking at any development, it's going to be, the whole thing is going to be a primary structure, it's not going to be retail and then a different structure. That's kind of split hairs, the other thing, uh, one section of the code said all properties, uh, with frontage shall have ground floor commercial along this frontage. Um, that's great, and I think we're all on the same page that we want that. The one thing that needs to be carved out is making this liberal, right? Um, some of these sites are blocked in on both sides, so one of the suggestions I thought, um, was all properties with frontage shall have ground floor commercial. Where feasible, with an exception only for ingress egress parking garages or public parks amenities. Something that allows for getting in and out and build parking garages, because what's gonna happen is, if the town ever wants to build a parking garage in one of these, it's not gonna be allowed. Um, and if someone wants to build a parking garage, um, I think they should be able to, we want to hide the cars, we want to have parking garages. Um, and carving out the parking garage will make, it's right now, the way I read this, and probably from a developer standpoint, is, hey, I'm gonna put surface parking. Um, because that's not a structure, that's just surface parking, it's cheaper for me. So I think just encouraging that, um, and cleaning up that language a little bit will make this extremely effective, and I mean. This is gonna be awesome, we can figure out how to get commercial along forty and Clayton, um, it's gonna be a win-win, so, thank you.
Anybody else here in the building? Okay, anybody online? Are you on?
Hi, uh, my name's Tony Eason, I live at fifty-three Trails Crossing, here in Frasier. First off, uh, and I know I only have three minutes, I, uh, moved here several years ago from an area that had extreme development pressure. Um, and I kind of saw what happened over the course of forty years. Uh, so I think with this property in this area, uh, the Riverwalk district, it's really important to kind of stick to the vision of. You know, what Frasier is with the funky eclectic design feel, it, it seems that with the. Zero setback, forty-five foot height, you know, elevation for buildings, um. Open space going from fifteen to five percent, trying to get all the, and by the way, I think it's very important to have affordable and workforce housing. So it was great to hear that discussion, thank you. We're going from fifteen to five percent and no setbacks, and hearing that there will be so much building, that you don't have to worry about snow removal. Because you've covered every square inch up to forty-five feet. So I think the language in this is very, no offense, developer friendly, at the expense of like the long-term benefit of the community. Now, should it be developed? Absolutely, but I think you'll be looking at row after row after row of forty-five foot buildings. You know, taking out ninety-five percent of all available building foot square footage. I mean, it's like dormitories, and this is called the Riverwalk, so I, I think they're, it's kind of leaning towards something that feels very un-Frasier-like. And so I'm not saying do nothing, develop it, but develop it with the, somebody here said, you know, the hundred year view, um, what do you want it to look like? Not dormitories, but I think the way this is, the language is set up, if you, if you allow it, that's what it will be. And, uh, you know, you see the building next to the distillery and the Arrow and Winter Park, and you drive by and walk by. If you're talking no setback, you mean road, sidewalk, forty-five foot high building, it could be nothing but canyons back there. No light, you know, no atmosphere, and I know there's a line in the, the language about building elements, um. It's gonna be, you know, facades that are gonna look from, you know, but that building is gonna be forty-five feet up to, you know, high, right up to the sidewalk. If it's on a corner, that's all you're gonna get, so, you know, it should be developed, I just think it should be developed with an eye toward. What you want it to be and look like in the character, uh, that matches, you know, Frasier.
It's during.
Anybody else here in the building? Okay, anybody online?
Oh, yes, we got one. Hi, Beth Ann Eason, um, one of the things that Will referenced and that Tony just.
Beth, can you just tell us the people in the town of Frasier?
I'm sorry, Town of Frasier.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one of the things, thank you very much, this is incredibly informative, uh, one of the things that Will referenced was the overall plan for, uh, the area, and while it is. Uh, it's changing from a zoning perspective, it, and speaking to, um, what Tony just referenced, coming up with a master plan for that area. I, um, agree with and support, because it's, if, if we look at the overall use and want to combine as much. Space, access to the Riverwalk, overall appeal to come to Frasier, commercial, residential, and workforce housing. There would be an incredible benefit if we could develop an overall plan for that entire area. Holistically, to really think about what it can be, as opposed to looking at one-off. Opportunities and trades and swaps around the, uh, land that is there. Um, so that everyone can benefit from the appeal that can get created and drawing in. Um, individuals to the Town of Frasier and benefiting everybody from the benefit, and my concern, uh, is that. Um, with the two buildings that have just gone up, the discussion around the, um, park that's there behind the. the discussion around the, um, park that's there behind the distillery that we're looking at things very individualistically as opposed to the whole picture. And the whole picture can be incredibly powerful and make Frazier a great draw. So I'm asking that, um, I think it was done in twenty eighteen maybe was an initial draft of that whole area. Um, I don't know if that has been refreshed or there's a plan to do that in addition to the specific zoning requirements, but my request to the group would be that, um, we step back and hit the pause button on everything and really look at an overarching plan for all of the land that's there and how might big use to everyone's benefit.
Anybody else online?
I, I have one other question, actually. Are we going to be discussing the commercial property? Or I'm sorry, the town-owned property, um, that sits behind the distillery right now, the Mural Park?
We're not discussing that right at this specific moment, but we are later. Yes, later. If you have later on the agenda for this meeting, yes, Beth.
Okay, thank you.
One more.
Hi, my name is Sue Colburn, and I live in Frazier. I would just like to reiterate and support everything that Beth Ann just said. I think she makes really valid and good points. I won't take the whole three minutes. That's my thought. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the public comment and the board. So I just want to make one thing clear. We didn't put this RMU zone that we're doing. We didn't change the height. It's always been forty-five feet. So we, we're not adding footage. What we're trying to do is add it so that we have more of a commercial outlay in there. And the planning commission has, um, the head of it, Andy Miller, has suggested that we would be holding more workshops. We're planning to find out the whole area, whole town, right? So I'm looking at, I should make those.
And that is, you know, there's, what, there's a sixty-foot setback, including road and sidewalks. So forty-foot, five-foot height. We are still going to get some stuff, maybe not all day, obviously, but most of the day.
For the running.
Yeah.
What were the side setbacks? Are there, are these zero setbacks in all the buildings on sides?
I don't know. Think of family detached flowing in at five feet, uh, which is a conditional use. Uh, and then for other products, there is no minimum requirement. So you could spread them out, or you can do the shoulder-to-shoulder type of, kind of traditional masonry that you want to.
Like you see that with western towns.
Well, the point about the access to the, to the river, you don't want a wall of buildings. Then people can't get through the damn river.
It could be a design language of someone's buildings having that setback, and then they have a back right. People walking by their businesses, actually.
I would like to remind the board and, and everybody who's listening, um, that the, the reason why there's no minimum requirement is, is not because we want to see every square inch developed, but it's because each, each project will be evaluated on its own, own terms and relative to neighboring properties and go through, every project has to go through site plan review that ultimately gets approved by the board. So there will be plenty of opportunity to, uh, modify setbacks that are appropriate for each project to make sure that we're not, you're not getting a wall of buildings.
So it doesn't set a precedent. It says they can understand what your regulation says, zero setbacks. On zero. Yeah, that's what this is, we can argue that, we can change it.
Okay, so we're, we have the staff as more, more to do. Over here, my, you have this public hearing, if I can get that motion.
Can we continue the publication?
Further discussions? All in favor? So we're not going to be either. Okay. But we are now at, because I need a motion to suspend the board, the trustees' meeting and open the liquor license report. So.
Second.
Further discussions? All in favor? So we're having a public hearing, and I was watching for birdie lounge liquor license application.
So the matter before the board tonight is that the Birdie Lounge LLC filed an application, um, with the town clerk for a new tavern liquor license located at four oh six Zerex Street, Unit B, which is in the new Cozlic development on Highway forty. Um, they applied on July thirteenth. And, um, I'm going to just kind of go through the liquor finding facts, um, that are required per a public hearing for this, uh, type of license, for any liquor license. Um, so again, um, they applied on July thirteenth. Um, we did do a background investigation. The applicants are Dylan Christensen, Stephen Christensen, and Bridget Christensen, who are here tonight in the audience, who have the opportunity to speak to the board tonight. Um, they, um, did request a concurrent application, which means that the application goes to the local licensing authority and the state at the same time. It does make the application process a little faster through the state. And, um, so this type of license is for consumption on the licensed premise. And this type of license does require, um, that the license shall have light sandwiches or have sandwiches and light snacks available. And they do intend to serve, um, panini sandwiches in the establishment. And, um, let's see, this public hearing, it was noticed in the newspaper and on the building. Um, it was noticed, um, on August twenty-fourth on both of those locations and ran in the newspaper. And that proof of publication was provided in the packet tonight. Um, per the application, which was provided in the packet, um, the applicant does rent the premise. They do not own them. Um, this type of license is permitted per our zoning regulations and the location proposed. And, um, there, the distance restriction have been eliminated per the town code so that there is no distant restrictions to, to things such as schools and churches and so forth. And the neighborhood that is, so when they do a, when we do, uh, comparison of all the different liquor licenses, we do look at the Frazier Valley Metropolitan Recreation District. That is what we consider to be in our licensed area. And within that, the Town of Frazier has seventeen licenses. The Town of Winter Park has forty-nine, and Tavernash has three. Um, so, um, you can, the board could deny an application if the issuance of the license will result in an add, result in or add to an undue concentration at the same class of license and will result in the required use of additional law enforcement resources. So the Town of Frazier currently only has one tavern or two tavern licenses, so this would make a third tavern license. Um, and again, in that background check, um, there was no negative information found on the background check that is run through the, um, the CBI and the, our Winter Park, Granby, um, Winter Park, Frazier, and Granby Police Departments. Um, they, and provided in the packet also, um, the applicants did provide a petition showing that the residents of Frazier are interested in having an additional outlet at this location that the applicants did circulate. And then, I have provided in the packets, um, the, uh, rec, I do recommend approval of the resolution, um, twenty-three nineteen, or two thousand twenty-three oh nine oh one, to approve the liquor license for the Birdie Lounge. Um, and in the application or in the packet, you did have the application, um, the individual history record for each applicant. Um, there was a detailed sketch drawing that's done by their architect that's provided in there also. Again, that petition, the proof of publication, um, that's the liquor finding facts, which I briefly went over, and then that resolution also. Um, before Kent will open our public hearing, does the board have any questions for me on the application? Sure.
So tavern, what kind of alcohol can you serve in a tavern?
Any kind, beer, liquor, and wine. Um, a tavern license just requires those, uh, light snacks and sandwiches.
Versus a restaurant?
Versus a restaurant, correct. Which, uh, so they're not required to serve like a full meal. Yeah. It's the tin cup and, um, the foundry. Yeah.
I'll put some of that whole staff back and be all right.
Alright, I'll pass it over to Kent, who will open our public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Antoinette. So these liquor license hearings are semi-formal. They call them quasi-judicial hearings, which means we have to run them in a certain procedurally, procedural way. Uh, so I don't know if Antoinette mentioned it or not, but the hearing is going to be electronically recorded. And anybody who does come up and speak will need to be sworn in by Antoinette, just like if you're in a court of law. Um, so kind of how this is going to go tonight is we'll first hear from the applicants. They can give an opening statement or remarks, uh, present any evidence that they want to. Then we'll hear from people that are either, or are in the audience or online that are either in favor or against this liquor license application. Um, and then we'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond and rebuttal to anything that comes up either for or against during that period, period of the presentation. Uh, anytime that the, um, members of the board want to ask questions, feel free. Once all the testimony has been heard, uh, then it'll be kicked back to the board to make a decision. You can either deny the application, approve the application, prove it with conditions. Uh, you can take it under advisement for a period of time. You can go into executive session and ask some questions. Or, I guess that's probably all your options. So with that, um, I guess I would ask the applicant to come up and then give an opening statement and present their side effects.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bridget Christensen, and I'm part owner of the Birdie Lounge. And we're really excited to be opening for golf simulators.
She's got to swear to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was on a roll too. I'm going to come back. I swear to tell the truth, I have a truth and nothing but the truth. I swear to tell the truth of the truth and nothing but the truth. We're opening, um, golf simulators, and we're very excited about it. It's my husband and my son. And, um, we're bringing to the community, uh, four bays, which we're, um, hoping will bring some activity to town and some business and people can do something other than skiing and hiking and, um, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions. So goodbye.
How many, how many people in the restaurant at the time on the taverns?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay. And how quickly do people go through the bays, like?
Um, so it's, um, an hour for eighteen holes, and so if you have two people, it'd be two hours. And we have up to six people per bay. Normally Denver models, they say between two to four people usually play in bay all the time. Um, we're going to start out, we think ten to close on ten AM, just to see how morning business goes, so we're hoping, yeah. Um, we're thinking about between nine and ten and a little bit later on weekends if desired.
That's exciting. It's something fun and new.
I'm excited. Thank you. Let's hear that. It's my retirement, so.
What is the square feet of this, is it?
Almost twenty-five hundred.
Will the frontage have windows or would be enclosed?
It's in their building, so yes, it's all windows. Yep, beautiful, beautiful building.
And this is my, is it like, what, ten by, ten feet?
Fifteen by. My tech crew.
People might be able to see them when they're driving by and that kind of stuff.
They're going to be on the, kind of the opposite side of the building just because of, um, obviously the windows are all in front. So it just makes sense to put the bays on the other side with the projector. Um, we are, we have a, um, turbo shaft for the panies, which does not require a hood.
Do your co-applicants want to speak too, or?
I doubt it, but.
Okay, well then, um, here are no more questions. If you don't have anything further, we'll open it up to the public and see if they have any comments.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Anybody from the public or online? Will be online? Well, I guess you don't need to do any rebuttal. Just needs, it's, uh, open discussion for you and possible motion whether you have. Well, I like it. I like the idea. Being able to stretch out the fact golfing in the middle of winter, so quick, it tells you in seconds, there you can actually get up.
Yeah, it's great. It's a great addition to our community.
A little fun. Going with this gentleman.
Yeah. I think all, yeah, all the businesses around the world back as well.
Having something new is nice. Hey, I like the mic motion. Because we're doing a revolution coming twice the old one. I don't want to give a license, I think. No coverage.
Is that good? Am I running it here? All there's there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations. Yeah, now, so now we need a motion to, to leave the liquor, to close the liquor license.
Somewhere.
Forward. We go back, resume back into our trustee. Did they make that motion?
Somewhere.
For a second, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? You guys don't have to stick around if you don't want to. We're not going to fault you. Okay, so now we are in discussion of possible action and resolution twenty-two-three zero-nine-zero-two for the major site plan for La Titi Vista town, which is located at eight thirty-two, called PD Drive.
Thank you. Gonna go ahead and share. Alright, can everyone see this okay?
It's blank.
Can you see it?
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, great. Okay, um, yep, as, uh, was mentioned, I'm Alyssa Rivas with Baseline. This is a major site plan request at eight thirty-two, a PD Drive. And the request is for a major site plan to construct a duplex and a single-family residence on a six thousand six hundred and forty-seven square foot lot. And is requested as a follow-up to a conditional use permit to construct a three-unit residential development on reduced lot sizes. And that was approved on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. So the required land use approvals, other than the current request for a major site plan, is a minor subdivision and final plat, and that is allowed for residential development fewer than five lots. So, bit of background, the applicant and property owner is Jardi Launger. Property address again, eight thirty-two Apd Drive. And it is zone medium-density multifamily residential. And again, a three-unit residential development is the proposed use. So a couple weeks ago, on August 23rd, 2023, the Planning Commission did consider the request for the major site plan. And the code did require that to go through a public hearing. And after reviewing the request, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval to the board subject to the conditions of approval and Resolution 2023-0801. So here is the property again outlined in red. And again here, and you can see that it's surrounded by other medium-density multifamily properties on all sides. So for the zoning, single-family and multifamily dwelling units are permitted in this zone district, so that's covered. Section 192240 requires a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet for single-family dwelling units and 2,500 square feet for multifamily dwelling units. And that conditional use permit that I mentioned earlier that you're familiar with, it did approve a reduced lot size of a minimum of 2,178 square feet per unit. And so this lot being point one-five acres or 6,642 square feet, it does meet that minimum requirement for the lot area. And it does comply with the other, or complies or exceeds with all the other standards, including a lot with setbacks, a max allowed building height, and open space. So here is the proposed major site plan. The duplex units are here on the southern side, and the single-family residential up on the north side. And you can see that there's landscaped areas and snow storage as required by the code. So here is the east elevation and the west elevation. And this application was sent out on referral on July 31st, and comments were received on August 7th and sent back to the applicant that day as well. And so according to 191215 of the code, major site plan does not require a hearing for this meeting, although as you're aware, the, the board is the final decision-making body. And so on to the major site plan criteria, which are the criterion are outlined in section 192110 of the code. The first is that the proposed site development meets all the applicable requirements of chapter 19, and staff did find that in the affirmative. The second is that the proposed site development is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Staff did find that in the affirmative as well. Some of the relevant policies include that the development meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of the future generations to meet their own needs. Additionally, that the town should promote a variety of housing types, densities, and styles. And the proposed development does provide needed multifamily housing. Because it's limited to the three residential units, staff does feel that it minimizes impacts. And additionally, property should be developed in a manner that preserves and provides open space. And as I mentioned earlier, the conditional use site plan does exceed the 35% open space requirement. It does propose 41.9, so that's being met. The third criterion is that the lot size, dimensions, and setbacks are consistent with what's shown in the approved final plat and the zone district requirements. And all of those are consistent with the approved Harmigan subdivision final plat and the MDMF zone district requirements. And for the fourth, no buildings or structures infringe on any easements, and staff did confirm that there are none that will infringe. And there were also no comments received from referral agencies indicating any infringement on easements. And then the final is that the proposed site grading is consistent with the requirements of any applicable adopted storm drainage criteria or master drainage plans. And based on referral and correspondence with Merrick, the adopted storm drainage criteria or drainage plans don't apply to the proposed site grading. With that, staff recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the major site plan subject to the conditions in the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. Answer any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry, I can't quite hear the question.
Trustee Walden would like to know how the roof, the slanted roof that goes V-shaped inside of the duplex performs?
How the slanted roof performs is what I heard. Well, I mean, this would be required to go through the building permit review process where it would be required to meet any codes. I'm not sure if that is what you mean, but.
So if I can just clarify, this would be a building, Winter Park Building Department issue, not a major site plan issue. The building, the structure would be reviewed by Winter Park, not by Baseline.
The answer is we don't know. Is there anything relevant to the major site? Okay, motions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then I'd like to go ahead and defer, I've now figured out why everybody's here, because nobody's left yet. So let's go ahead and take a break, a five-minute break. And then we'll come back and get to the next slide. How would that just mean the application, right?
If we have an affordable housing.
Okay, we're now back from break. We're gonna go back to the BIC revolution twenty twenty-three zero-nine zero-four. Referring a proposed sale of property owned by the town treasurer and currently used for purposes.
All right, thank you Mayor. What is before you tonight is the ballot language for the ballot question that is to go forward. Following the town board's approval to the November ballot for Fraser residents, voters to approve this exchange of land. I think it serves well to read that, but just a little prep for this is this includes a parcel that's behind the Fraser distillery. Currently being used as the mural park area and. That is currently owned by the town in exchange for the parcel that currently has the barn on Clayton Court. You all know what block that is. Is there any confusion about locations with that? From the meeting that we had in August, it was directed from the board to move forward with the ballot initiative for this. To move forward with land exchange and as part of that, we have ballot language before using it. So I will read that ballot language here and. So the ballot question is whether the town of Fraser should sell mural park located at three-twenty Easton Avenue. Parcel number one-five-eight-seven-one-nine-one-zero-nine-zero-one-nine for four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. With the intention of using the sale proceeds to acquire a parcel on Clayton Court. Parcel number one-five-eight-seven-one-nine-one-zero-zero-two for four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. For use in connection with the Fraser Creative Arts Center or for other public purposes as determined by the Fraser Board of Trustees. That is the question I'll be going to the voters in November and that will require a fifty-one, fifty-plus-one vote, correct Ken?
Correct.
For that to pass. So that's what we're looking for approval for tonight. The board was moved forward with being on the ballot initiative for this land exchange.
So what's the difference in property sizes and existing infrastructure?
So the the current town-owned property is point-three-seven acres. The barn lot property is point-two-five acres. So you're looking at about a thirty-two percent difference in size. Existing infrastructure on the current town-owned property, we do have some concrete work that was put in last summer. For that we got a grant for for to make it more of a park with some sitting benches areas. The benches can be relocated, but the cement work would obviously be demolished for any new development on the site. Currently, there's drain pans on the site. As far as other infrastructure, I mean, there's access to water sewer. I believe natural gas in that road as well.
Okay, so the property down by the river, at this time, does it have access to water and sewer?
So currently that the property, the barn lot property on Clayton Court has access to sewer. It does not currently have access to water. That is part of the budget item that is forecasted for next year for next year's project for that to be done. We currently have a grant that's been applied for one-point-five million dollars for ten-foot heated sidewalks on both sides of that road. With the water line extension in that paved section of the road. If we don't get that grant, we are still budgeting for the water line extension and the paved road. Along that section of Clayton Court. So it will have water access anticipated next year.
So my concern is the price is the same and it's. Seems like we're giving away a lot of value there.
I thought we had asked for appraisals, remember?
Yeah.
Like where are they?
Yeah. How's it been in the appraisal?
Also, there's things on there you want to see under appraisal. Part of it is that the barn lot, as we're calling it, the barn lot's adjacent to another piece of property that's owned by the town.
Correct.
Which makes the whole development, embedded development piece. So even if one's worth less, which it probably wouldn't be, you get an appraisal of what's down by the river. Versus what's in the middle of town and could have dormitories built all around it for one person's home. That could change the value of that property. The fact that it's adjacent to the other town property makes it a much better purchase for the town. You'll have a much better development in the law. And the fact that we're already putting in the water in the street anyways, that once that's there, that would change the value of the property.
Kent, you want to speak a little bit to the contract language that we're working through with Bison Development for this that provides for land appraisals?
Sure. So. To Parnell's comment, in anticipation of talking about this ballot language and maybe moving forward with it tonight. We have been trading draft contracts with the Bison Development Group. And we got to a point today where we're in agreement in principle. And so there's two contracts. One from Fraser to Bison, one from Bison to Fraser for the two parcels. They are the same amount as Michael mentioned because according to Bison and staff. They view the relative intrinsic values of each property to be relatively equal. So that's our starting point. I did raise the question though that there's probably going to be a concern from the community as to. What's a third-party objective appraiser could view this as? And so in both contracts, we put, we left the. Water plate language that you see in every Colorado real estate contract that each party has a right to get appraisal on their own. And if they don't like how it comes back, they can object and terminate the contract. So these contracts are cross-reference to each other. If one contract doesn't close, then the other contract doesn't close. And the one contract from Fraser to Bison for the mural park is also contingent on approval, voter approval in November. Of the total deal. Does that answer your question?
Because the other thing, you know, there's been lots on Easton that have been up for sale. And the highest sell offering price so far has been around three-twenty-five. So they're asking four-fifty, but they got three-twenty-five. Putting a price of four-fifty on there is fine for the town right now, but the appraisal is what's really going to tell you the value between one and the other. You just need to make sure that the appraiser knows that the town is putting in water, finishing that road. It's going to be very equal based on what utilities are there and how it's sitting up. Whoever's hiring their appraisers may want to mention that to them.
So one additional thing, Parnell, that I didn't mention is. One variance between the two contracts is in the Bison to Fraser contract on the river parcel, the barn parcel. In that. If they were to order an appraisal, or I'm sorry, if Fraser were to order an appraisal and came in below four-fifty. Bison would have the ability to make up that difference in value to make the deal come forward. We can't do that on the other contract for the mural park because that would be approved by voters. And if we had that term in there where we can change price, basically meaning that Fraser would have to come to the table with more money. That would not be a voter-approved price. So we couldn't figure that out.
I'm sorry, but you cannot, well, everybody, if you want to address the board, you raise your hand, I'll call you up to the podium. Come up and state if you live in the town of Fraser's or not, okay? Barry, come up to the podium.
My name is Barry Young, I live in the town of Fraser, and I can add some additional color to your question. In addition to everything you mentioned. There is a water retention system under the ground. It cost about seventy-thousand dollars six years ago and based my experience with. Construction costs that probably would be north of a hundred thousand today. And there's also about sixty-thousand dollars worth of paving. And based on current paving costs, what I've learned unfortunately in the last few weeks, that would probably be about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
I think what we need to look at is what what we want to see the town of Fraser become. So everybody likes the idea of this Riverlot District. Everybody likes the idea of beautiful art center that will bring people pass safely into Fraser. The benefit of having this extra lot right next to where the proposed art center will be is just more open space. More things that the town can do with this space. So maybe the art center has an amphitheater right next to it. And now we have the space to have people listen to that music. I hope that whoever builds on Clayton Court on that east side. Will donate some land to the town of Fraser and have a little park along along the Fraser River so that people could do music. The restaurants that are there and have patio space and enjoy that amenity as well. So a big part of this land swap is is allowing the town to do what we want to see the Riverlot District become. And so I just think it's a good idea from that perspective alone.
So I agree on that land. I really think that it's a it's a great move to be able to add that. But I do believe we have a fiduciary responsibility for citizens to make sure that we are getting. The value that we need out of our place and the other places in the county.
Agreed.
And it sounds like this contract take care of that. So I'm okay with that.
What happens to the sixty-five-thousand dollars the town? Is responsible for if it loses the election?
Are you talking about for the design plans? So we've we've worked with Bison on that. We are looking at providing a survey. A soils report and a phase-one environmental for our parcel. And that is all that we're going to be doing for our site, which is something that we would do anything anyway if we were to ever develop anything on that site. So there's actually not going to be any work from Bison as far as reimbursable expenses to design work. That would be provided for the town if it's the voter approval that is not going to be. So this way, if November comes along, the election takes place. If it doesn't pass, then we still have things that are still relevant to our parcel as far as anything that we would do vertical on it. So there'll be no reimbursing to that.
I would just mention too, I mean, that in their contract, they have a responsibility to provide the same thing on the barn parcel for the town. Those same items. Yeah, so it's reciprocal.
I mean, that, you know, that was not what was stated at the last meeting.
I I I'm. I'm open to having the, I saw some hands, I'm gonna let the board talk a little bit and then I'll I'll reach out to the public. I'm open to having this go to the voters, but I don't, I mean, we had asked for an appraisal. We said that there was differences in prices and I don't know how we're at this stage tonight without what's an appraisal. So I feel like if we make a decision tonight, we're going to be making a decision based on inadequate information. So we're making a, we're making a hard decision rather than a brain decision.
A decision tonight in terms of the timeline to get it on the ballot?
You do because that's the final date for the ballot language, September eighth. And looking ahead, that's submitted tomorrow.
Okay.
But the provision that we will go forward with the appraisal. The provision is instead of it comes back higher, that the contract amount will be higher with the gap between those numbers.
So, yeah, I think we're saying the same thing. So on the hard parcel, if the appraisal came back. Was less than four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Bison would have the opportunity to make up that difference so that the new values equal out. Under words of a credit closing. On the other side of the coin, if the appraisal comes back less on the. Mural park parcel, then the only option really is, or there's two options at that point. Bison can elect to just move forward with trade, straight across straight, or they can go to terminate. The town's not going to come to the table with any additional value.
Okay, so what happens when the mural park, if this was to happen, comes back at five-hundred and combines a two-fifth? For the L C L? Or do they have the option to make make up that difference or they're just saying that?
They would have the option to make up the difference. If it comes back over. You've already made your deal to sell it for fifty and it's been approved by voters, so.
So that's why, that's why I'm not okay with this decision. We don't have, it would have been easy to get.
So.
Wow, it would have been easy to get an appraisal.
So if we submit this for.
I would be shocked.
For a ballot issue. And we get the, can we pull it off? Is there a date to pull it off the ballot?
So one thing that's going to be coming to the board that we didn't work to have an appraisal before is we have the appraisal done before we bring the agreement to be approved. So we still, as Ken talked about, we have come to the general agreement of terms for the. Contract land exchange. And we can have before that comes to the board, we can bring that with an appraisal for the parcel behind it.
But it's still on the ballot.
It's just on the ballot, so we can sell it if we want to. Doesn't say we have to sell it. Because we don't have to.
I know, but it's still on the ballot.
And the next option, this is one of those things where you let you let the developer and staff, and I'm talking to the board. Put you into crisis mode because of that. And we've done this in the past and we've made bad decisions. The next thing is that we go to an eight-month election instead of the one number. You're talking about the six months.
I don't feel like we're in a crisis situation.
We are, I mean, he just said it's tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow's done.
And we did not get the information that we.
I know, but I don't feel like it's a crisis because I believe that fiduciaries are stakeholders. Getting the art center on the river is going to be far more valuable than having an art center behind the distillery.
Okay.
And that regardless of how much you like land cost, that'll be a better future place for the art than.
I don't disagree with that, I just want to not give away. Well, I mean, I want to protect the.
More valuable to us is the location.
Well, the more down the house, you put in a road with open plate and court. So if we're talking about just the value of objects, that's a completely different thing with value in the future of where it's going to be. That's why we put more down the house and put in the road. It was much more valuable to have a road than it was to have an old house.
That's that's all true now, but that it's not addressed what Philip just said. It doesn't address it at all.
But do you honestly think the two properties are going to be that much different? And I don't, I don't think that's possible. I'm not going to work it over if it's a small gap, so. Okay, so let's open it up to the public.
Yeah.
So let's start right here. This is the same deal, you're gonna have three minutes. When that goes off, you've got to stop talking.
Okay, I'm Philip Sargent, I'm a resident of Fraser. And I don't think we're talking about a small gap here. I think we're talking about a pretty major gap here in valuation. And I think we all go by, I think we all believe in our county assessor or town assessor, whoever it is. Whenever I try and challenge my tax assessment, they tell me no, believe in the assessor. And based on that, you're talking about a valuation on the on the Bison property of a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars. By the county assessor. And on the other property, you're talking about a valuation of six-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. That's four-point-two times higher than assessed valuation between those two properties. So it's not a small deal, it's a big deal and you need to take care of the. The the your constituents here in the town of Fraser.
Thank you Phil, I was trying to pull that up on my phone and I couldn't get that.
Just call Phil. You said what the Bison, are you referring to the farm?
The farm property.
Hey everyone, Kevin Rifkin, already spoke here. So I just wanted to give some background on this. We, when we thought about this, we proposed this, we thought it made a ton of sense to the town, right? It's a trade that hopefully benefits everyone. Candidly, for us, it's not a money-making scheme. We're going to build very similar things on either parcel. What we like about it is the contiguous nature of the town getting potential for an acre site, a little less than an acre for an art center. On the appraisal, I mean, we're fine getting an appraisal and we can work with you there. One thing to know, the appraisal value of the site takes into account that there's no road there. It's candidly, you can't build anything there right now because it's dirt road. Baseline made that very clear to us when they asked us to pay for every single improvement on Clayton Court. To build a little commercial and some townhomes. One thing that we see and why we wanted to do this is, I mean, you look over in Rome right now at one for a Beaver Lodge. Which is a single site for point-two-seven acres and it's listed for nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on the river. So I think there is a ton of value on the river and we're fine getting an appraisal. I mean, between us friends here, I think our river lot is probably worth just as much if not more. But we can't have the town pay more and we don't want the town to pay more, that's not what we want to do. But we want to do what's fair and make this worth everyone's while and to everyone's point, have a good contiguous downtown. That could happen. I want to have an art center on the river, amphitheater and art center on the river and have a park back there. I want to get more use out of mural park. I'm there every day right now and it's not getting that much use, it's kind of used as a parking lot. So our goal is to create something that is a win-win. And how we can try and make it do that would be great. We don't want to, I mean, the last thing we want to do is stamp the town out of money, that's not who we are and not what we're trying to do. So I think we're open to suggestions. From a timing perspective, we're developers, we want to develop, we want to see downtown grow and build. So we're going to move forward on one of these either way. And it's not a huge issue for us if this doesn't pass, but we want to do something that will serve everyone. So that's my two cents and happy to do an appraisal or discuss with anyone and how we can get this done.
Sorry, sorry, I don't know your name.
Ken Jensen, town of Fraser resident. I guess a question I have is that, you know, with the ballot initiative, is that something that's required for the city to do? Because when I look at it, it's like if you put this on the open market. There are other individuals that might be interested in that parcel property. And just like you said, Katie, you've got a fiscal responsibility to us. So if you could get six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for that property, and I know that there have been other inquiries into that property. Why wouldn't you just put the ballot out that you're going to be able to sell it, but not necessarily fix it to where you're going to do the swap? Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Ken. So Bison is looking to develop the current barn lot that's on Clayton Court. If the land exchange does not go through, they're looking at building on that site which restricts us to our current existing site that is proposed for the art center. So similar to what some comments that I made before, it's looking at the value of having a larger parcel to actually build a successful art center on the Fraser River. And this is the opportunity to do it. If this, if we, if this, if not pursued, then, and and that's fine, if that's a direction from the board. Then we have our smaller parcel, then we're restricted on what we can do on that one. Otherwise, if things stay as they are, Bison will do their development on that barn lot land. And will retain ownership of the parcels behind the distillery. There has been direction from the board to move forward with an art initiative that we're supporting with the Fraser Center for Arts. And with that, it does come with looking at the land that you really need to make that center successful. So with that vision has come the need, the requirement to have larger pieces of land. So if we're able to make this happen, I don't think that the art center is going to work on that section of the river. Or it's not going to meet the legacy building standards of the board had originally intended for that. So that's, that's why this is looking at it being a timely manner. And as far as addressing the timing of this, it is timely. Bison is looking to provide for their investors for, to break ground on either parcel in May of next year. So that's why I was doing the survey and the phase-one soil samples, help set them up so that you can get there for a May construction date. So either way, they're going to be looking at breaking ground in May on either of those parcels. So a lot of discussion that was talked about earlier is the vision that's there for the art center. We can still, you know, I guess there could be a case where we can't come to an agreement based on appraisals for whatever reason. But the ballot may still, the ballot initiative will continue forward, is my understanding. So I don't know if it comes to null or if we can't reach an agreement, but we have the potential to reach an agreement after the ballot initiative, correct?
Yes. So if the contract's terminated before it went to a vote. And the voter's still elected to approve it. Still need a contract to have a closing, right, so it wouldn't go to closing.
It's just allowing us to have the ability to have an agreement.
Right.
So Bison built the road in for the for the farm property?
We know that.
But not by you.
They can still do a lot of groundwork for that road. I'd also like to remind the trustees that the public arts, what is the Fraser?
Fraser Valley Arts Center.
Fraser Valley Arts proposed a year and a half ago to do this art center on top of the Church of What Happened. So this is once upon the Church of What Happened, they were going to do an addition on top of them, and that's how they were going to succeed with this. So once again, you're getting information that's trying to make you make a decision not based on all the facts. Well, and so.
But it was a whole different plan.
They're saying you need this giant piece of property to make it successful.
And it's not giant, it's not even a nature.
Well, I'm just trying to give you guys the information. They're, they're giving you all these keywords, you know, you need these larger parcel to make it successful, but they, that committee touched it right back.
So you guys are, you're $641,000, we've got all the size. So the vacant lot, 315, right across the street, and the house lot, 321, right across the street, and two of those combined comes out at $338,000. That's a piece with a house on it, and a vacant lot, which would be bigger than lot 320, which is the mural park. So when you look at county assessments, they're way off, and the county assessments are way off this year because they misuse it. You can laugh at it if you want, they are off.
We wouldn't be having this discussion had we had the appraisal. I mean, that's, that's the part of what's happening right there. So I'm going to let somebody else that said their hand up online, that man, and then I'll get to you.
Okay.
Oh, thank you so much. And I love what you said about not being able to, not having all the information in the discussion. I'm hearing a lot about what Bison wants for the development of their project and are twisting into pretzels to try and get it over the goal line within a specific amount of time so they can start building. And I have two core questions, which is really understanding. One, what is the overarching plan for that whole area of development? If we all want all of these things, if we can look at them in the context of what our collective options are versus trading parcels that will never be able to go back to one or the other, and it will enable us to determine if the town should be putting that land up for sale separately for some other purpose. And I don't know enough about the process that the town needs to go through if they are considering the sale of a key piece of property, but it seems to me like that would be something that you would want to step back to be able to provide the optimal use for it, as opposed to just determining that we're going to make a specific land swap.
Thanks, Deb Ann. We have Paula.
Hi, I'm Paula Stewart, I live in Fraser. I just would, I would echo what you're saying, basically, Philip, I think you should have the appraisals in order to make a decision. I don't know where the $450,000 number came from, but Sarah was kind enough to share with me today, the survey that was done in 2016 that was sent out to the whole town, and you may or may not be aware that in one of our recent committee meetings for DACT, that I had suggested, Katie's aware of it, because she's the chairman of the committee, that another survey to be sent out, either electronically and/or in person, to the population that, you know, are permanent residents here, to ask them, what is it that you really want? Because the emphasis, and I agree with what you're saying, Philip, is on this art center. Well, they don't have millions of dollars raised to build it, so we're so focused on this art center, but the money's not there to build it right now, and what's, what's going to be around it? It's the only thing that we seem to be focusing on, and as Brian said, there, there should be a vision here and not just zero lot line. My son lives in Pittsburgh, he lives in a zero lot line situation, and 160-year-old house. I don't want to see the river walk look like that. I mean, it's just, I don't feel it's appropriate. So I do think that it would be great if we could ask our citizens what they think again, because it's been since 2016, and that survey was made a part of the strategic plan for 2017.
And then ma'am, question.
Yes. Thank you.
So I'm Jamie Jensen, I'm a resident appraiser. I have a question, I believe you had mentioned it. I do agree with you, Philip, that we go back and we need an appraisal, I think we have a cart and front porch a little bit here. But my question is, if we move ahead with the ballot language as proposed with the $450,000 amount in there, and the appraisals come back different, isn't that ballot language incorrect, and aren't we misleading the voters on what they're voting for?
That's a good question. My question.
Well, yeah, the appraisal didn't come back at 450 or greater on what the town was purchasing, then the town would have the right to terminate. So if the, and I think they should terminate in that event, if the voters had approved at, you know, going forward at 450. In other words, if the appraisal came to 425, I think the town would have an obligation to terminate. Or Bison would have to make up an air price.
But air price, so it doesn't mislead the voters, that land exchange?
Not necessarily, because the way the contract would be written, at the end of the day, the town would end up with something of value equal to 450 or greater.
Can you make that language make, please?
Yes. The question is whether the town of Fraser should sell the mural park located at 320 East Some Avenue for $450,000, with the intention of using the self-proceeds to acquire a parcel on Clayton Court for $450,000, for use in connection with the Fraser Creative Art Center or other public purposes as determined by the Fraser Board of Trustees.
Do the numbers have to be in there?
Yes, the question will be taken. I think they do, I lean, because I think the public needs to know what the expected valuation is for both sides.
We're just guessing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's subjective, for sure.
Ken, could the language reflect, after evaluations of the properties, could it reflect being able to enter into an agreement, just being allowed? That's the whole point of this, right? Is allow the town to enter to an agreement, Bison development for this. Could we modify the language to reflect?
You can modify it to, I think you'd still want to put some ceiling on the price, you know, so that the voters know that it's not to exceed that. But yeah, you can grant, you can ask for it, or enter into an agreement, purchase the barn lot from Bison for a price not to exceed that. Again, you're putting in a specific amount here into Philip's point, if you're guessing with that number. Now, just timing-wise, Philip, just to kind of clarify, there was a sequence of events that has to happen before we could actually enter an appraisal. Number one, we had to work out an arrangement that both sides were okay with, in other words, contracts that both sides were okay with, because you can't order appraisals until no one may agree to that concept. So no appraisals have been ordered, and secondly, the way appraisers are stacked up these days, it would have been impossible to get an appraisal in that short time, right, between the last week and this. I mean, we'd like to get an appraisal before the vote, to be honest.
So you only get one shot.
I just want to give a little background, and then I'll kind of give what I'm recommending and comfortable with on our end. So we had initially looked at a bunch of different things on Clayton Court. We submitted an application for development on this parcel, the Red Barn parcel, back in December. We were told we had to make all these improvements for the entirety of Clayton Court, like $500,000, $600,000 worth of improvements. We can't, so the contract, we said that's not going to work. Then we came to find out the lot that the town owns that is adjacent to the Red Barn lot, that lot was granted to the town under the, it's an agreement, it's an amendment to a subdivision improvement agreement, that the town, in exchange for getting that lot, has to make the extension of the water line, paving of the road along Clayton Court, to put that infrastructure in place. And so then we said, okay, well, if the town's going to make these improvements, then you can let them do something on Clayton Court. So that's kind of how we came back to the parcel and said, hey, we'll re-approach this, we'll look at doing something here. And so then the town came to us and said, hey, you know, you guys now own this lot, this creates a really good opportunity for us to have an assemblage to do something a little bit bigger, that we think we need to support this art center, that we want to have and really make it a landmark piece. We said, okay, because we had submitted an application for four townhomes and a small little commercial on the Red Barn site. We're going to do essentially the same thing, and say it'll be four or five townhomes on the other site. So what I'm comfortable with is doing appraisals on both properties, and when we get appraisals done, there'll be an as-is, entitled value, and an as-built. I think it makes sense to be, you know, have the appraiser know these improvements are going in there, riverfront parcels, like if we're going to do four townhomes on the river, they're going to be $1,004, $1,006, they're going to be, you know, riverfront townhomes, they're going to be beautiful. If we're going to do them on the townhome parcel, they're not going to sell for that much. So that's our plan, that we're trying to do. Really doesn't make a difference to me. It was just something that the town came up to us and said, hey, do you think this would be great? We said, yeah, we think that'd be great too, I think art center, whatever you want there, a larger assemblage is going to allow you to do more things, have more creativity. So that's kind of why we agreed to do it, happy to do appraisals. You know, our situation is we paid so much for a lot, we already spent $60,000 doing our design work, so to trade, you know, that just, for us to pay more to do the same thing doesn't make sense, and I think we're one of the only landowners that provides a contiguous assemblage for the town that's willing to work, and that's why this is coming up. So just back on topic one, and whatever you want to say, I'm just here to present.
Ken, can you talk to, about agreement made with Bison, what legal, is there any border that you put out now, scanning? Is there others?
Yeah, so I'm going through the memory here, but I think that agreement was made in late 99, early 2000, and it required the town, as Greg mentioned, to put in certain infrastructure, certain improvements, water and sewer. But there was a time deadline that had to be done by, and that expired a long ago, so from a legal perspective, that agreement's not enforced.
Because the town felt, the town felt to do their part. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure they have all the information.
I want to make sure. The town felt to do their part, and that's.
We could, we could, he's speaking so softly, it's hard to hear.
Ken, could you repeat that? Can you please repeat what you told, is that, is that, is that binding contract?
Not in my opinion.
And Ken, would you say it was the person that donated the house that didn't fulfill the contract, or the town of Fraser that didn't fulfill the contract?
You know, part of it, I can't.
Who was supposed to put in?
I can't speak to what happened, because I wasn't.
Who was supposed to put in?
Well, according to the contract.
Right, so the town felt to do it. They had a deadline, and they didn't make it. The town felt we'd make it. We made an agreement with somebody.
I'm assuming it's, they're, they're not in the ground, so.
Okay, okay. So ma'am, I don't know, I'm sorry to beep you.
A little bit of background, this area that we're talking about is and was a trailer park. It has been a trailer park since '07. When the assessor looks at assessed values, they look at what's currently in there and what was in the previous. The assessed values are from a year and a half ago, not from today. If you take the properties and you apply them, there's a $10 difference between first square foot of what the appraiser says one lot's worth and the other one's worth. So you guys are hooked up on this county appraisal or county assess, those aren't accurate numbers to go by, nothing sells by those numbers.
So you say.
No, so I know.
My name is Sandra Davis, and I live in Fraser. And it just seems like the plan is not a plan here. I want to, you said I could come up here and echo what other people have said, so I echo what Deb Ann said, I echo what Paulie said, I echo what all these new friends of mine have said about this. I'm relatively new to the community here, and it just feels to me like you built a mural park, now what is it going to be? Townhomes. How long ago was that mural park built? You built, you know, you're going to build an art center, but we don't know when it's going to be, we don't have any timing on it, it's all, everything's contingent. And so if we have a plan, I'd like to see it, I don't, I think everybody would like to see it, but I would like to see something more detailed and something that has timeframes and ways of having it happen, and something that's comprehensive that we can.
Okay, any other public comment?
Yes, my name's Gordon Stewart, and I'm a resident of Fraser also. And, you know, I can't help but think of the yeah phrase, fools rush in where wise men fear to tread. And I agree with you, Philip. I don't think any of us know what we want here in the long run, what, what it's going to look like 10 years from now. And, and we don't even know what the property's worth. You say it's worth a heck of a lot more. That sounds like a salesman to me. How much more? And wouldn't somebody else possibly want to develop and offer the town more than $450,000? I think that's a possibility, that's all I have to say. Study it a little harder, like Phil suggests.
Anybody else in the audience, Barry?
Can I? Whatever.
I'd like to, I'm very young, I'm still a resident of Fraser. I'd like to commend your comment that we don't want to create a crisis here, and I think in addition to the financial issues, before we put a ballot initiative out there, I would ask the trustees, do you want to get any input from the town first? I know that they have a chance to vote on it, but do we want to put something out to vote on that they might very quickly turn down? And there's so much information, if you remember back, we came out with the overall plan in '16 or '17, we had meetings in here, they are really great, we got a lot of input from the public, and that created the Clayton Court plan, the downtown district. And one of the things I think we need to make it very clear to our residents is if we do this trade or sale, whatever you want to call it, that the developers need to develop, and they're going to remove the mural park very quickly, and it's going to take a very, very long time to anything in the riverwalk to replace it. And I can tell you from visual experience, people use this park every single day, they have lunch there, they congregate there, they play there. In the winter, children climb on the snow mound and they love it. And I think we need, I don't see why we'd rush in and put an initiative out there without having any insight of what the public wants. And this feels rushed to me, I only learned about it a week or two ago by accident, and this only got on the agenda this morning. Thank you.
Barry, before you sit down, didn't you buy your property from the town?
Yes.
And did you pay market rate, or did you pay a decent rate, what at that time, $189,000 or so?
First of all, it's a lot more than that. And second, Jeff Durbin called me in his office and said the town did an appraisal, and it appraised for less than I offered for it.
So would you have liked to have to go to a vote and then get put back up to public auction, to see if somebody else?
It did go to public auction.
It didn't go to public auction?
It did, so Jeff Durbin explained to me that when a town in Colorado sells property to an individual developer, they cannot make a deal, they have to put it out for bid, and the town gave us an RFP that was advertised for about a month, they got three bids, and ours was the highest. And Durbin, again, calling his office, he said, we've got a problem here. If you're going to get a loan for a very high amount of the property, you're not going to get it, because it appraised for less than you're offering.
But it didn't have to go to vote, correct? Because it wasn't used as a public access.
Fine, so if you don't want to go to a vote, put it out for bid.
Thank you, Barry.
I answered this question.
Are you, are you speaking as a clerk? Are you speaking as a clerk?
I would like to speak as the clerk. Just wanted to, I don't think that we really clearly answered Kim Jensen's question, but here on number one, the first whereas on the resolution, just want to read this to the board. Colorado Revised Statutes 311517, 7131A authorizes the Board of Trustees of the Town of Fraser to sell and dispose of real property used for park purposes so long as the question of said sale and the terms and the conditions therefore are submitted at a regular or irregular. therefore are submitted at a regular or special election and approved in the manner required by, by the statutes, by an election statute. So this to me, I read this to say, is this, the voters have to approve the sale of a property, but does it have to go in, in a question as a land swap? And we are doing it as a question as a land swap? Could it be a question of just a sale of the piece of property?
Yes, is the answer for that. We put that in the resolution to give a more complete picture and provide context to what is happening.
Yeah. And then what about a park? I mean, we, we called it the mural park, and we've had the mural festival there. Is it actually a park? What?
The statute talks about having to get voter approval for sale of park property or other property that's owned by municipality and used for those types of purposes. So we erred on the side of being conservative and think this festival goes to vote.
That's all I'd say.
Okay, one shot. Okay. Any more public? Anybody online? Is there anybody online?
Yeah.
A point of order here. You let some of the other audience spot up and some of the people talk twice, and now you're cutting some people off.
Different topics.
Barry spoke out of turn and I yelled at him.
No, he started, he started out of turn.
It was a different.
And that's what you said, no way, but he's still spoken twice.
All two different.
Other people on the, on the internet that have spoken twice also.
Different items.
She was on a different issue.
Two separate items.
Yeah, she was on a different agenda.
Okay, so board, what do you want to do? We'll make a motion.
When you find it.
Why don't? It's a tie vote or pass or fail, sorry.
Ready?
A mess.
On the ballot.
I think you have the ability to win or the other.
Well, there's only six.
Oh.
Sorry, we don't have Lewis.
No. I'd have to, I'd have to look it up, to be honest.
I don't think he has to be so.
Katie, it's twenty twenty-three on our end. I want to talk to, um, Resolution twenty, twenty-two, oh nine, oh four, referring to the post so appropriate for the town of Fraser.
All right. Any further discussion? Now, let's do a vote call start here, and we're gonna go that way.
Can you put your eye, Katie's little eye?
Wait, wait, wait. Please go on a circle.
One is a circle.
One is a counterclockwise.
Come on. Keeping you on your toes.
Vanderneal May.
Waldo May.
Ask this, George. Okay, we are now at, thanks everybody for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll get a run of the vote. Okay. Yeah, that should be definitely. Once again, we got back into the corner. Have you made the vote with no information, not all information?
I have the information.
I didn't have. We did not.
I don't, I did. You can't. Build on that property, it's built.
They're not, they're.
Hey, we called it on it, let's move on.
They, they passed it to the other corner. Nobody's backing.
No.
Okay. Okay, we are now at public arts committee application.
So we received an application from Anastasia Szenick to join the Public Arts Committee. Currently, there are eight members on the committee, and we are allowed to have up to eleven. We do reappoint the, all of the committees after the April election. So if you guys would choose to appoint this person, they would stay on until the reappointment of the committee, which is in April. So it's up to the board if you would like to appoint somebody at this time.
So.
She is qualified.
I guess I didn't look like her. Her application was, and yes, again, I think it's good to have an uneven number on board.
She did come recommended by the, the PAC.
Oh, good. That's all I needed.
Yeah.
Back in the day.
Are you, are you making a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept Anastasia Szenick's application to the Public Art Committee.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is budget committee appointment and board.
I just needed the names of the two members that wanted to be on the budget.
Okay, we have three applicants. Louis said that he wanted to be on it, Parnell, and Brian, so let's, let's raise your arms to, we can't do any.
No blinders.
I have a quick discussion. So I talked with Louis because he was over in Basalt, and he felt really strongly that he had a really strong background in that, and that he clearly wanted to serve, and he didn't feel that it was right that it was automatic he put to you to dance.
We're gonna vote.
I know, we're gonna vote, but I'm just.
If we went by vote call, who shows up to most meetings? I don't know.
Oh, dude, I just missed two in a row. I have.
Excuse me, I meant out of the three of us that are running, not out of everybody's team. I can't beat everybody, come on now. Okay. How do you, why do you want to, do you want to just? Does there any more discussion? Okay, how many, how many people, raise your hand, want, let's start with you in the room, Brian.
I thought that was everybody.
How many people want Parnell?
Five.
How many people want Louis?
Louis, you gotta vote. If you're listening.
Thank you, Lawrence. You should not have stayed around here. You should not have stayed here for four hours.
Can I be first next time? Yes.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you.
I know.
I said, don't speak about me.
She was sneaky.
Yeah.
Okay, next is the Basalt Colorado Association of Sneak Towns Conference Review.
Louis is in here, do you want to say it?
I would say it too, if you guys didn't know it.
No. They have a wonderful center. It's quite lovely. The land was gifted to the town for a public art center.
How big is it?
Here you go. It. Yeah, it's, but actually, no, it's not based on arts, it's for all parts. But it's lovely, and they give a lot of views. The design, it was really, it was like hula in the foyer. When just people got, you know, plucking their, so it's been considered a feature for design and everything, but it's getting a huge profit. And they talked about the moneymakers for their, what line is it, the community, but they could keep it up in Aspen, the shows. This community that they're in, Willetts, is incorporated into Basalt, but it's a brand new community. I'd say in the last, what did you say, Michael? Did five years, ten years at the most?
How old is this?
Yeah. Willetts.
Three years.
Three years, yeah. And it's got all the big boxes and stuff, so.
That whole subdivision's still, I think, twelve years. We all knew that that art center was coming, that drew a lot of business, though.
So they did say, you know, they, they planned for growth, and they stressed funding for growth. So when the time comes, I think it doesn't mean we need to look at for an arts facility, you know, if we want to stick with arts, we want to include performing arts. They did say that the majority of artists that they get that are actually bigger names, they don't like to perform outside because they're artistic or stuff like that. So that's why they have this indoor thing here. And outside of that, I was talking with Becca from the town of Winter Park, and she felt really strongly that we don't need another outdoor venue, we need a good indoor. So that was something to consider, too. But it was, it was excellent. And then there was one other thing that came out of, this wasn't just the art center. At the meeting, one of the sessions, they interviewed the police chiefs, I think it was Aspen and was it Breck?
Mountain Billy.
Mountain Billy, yeah, something like that. But they talked about the impacts of the government's legislation on requiring their tracking on profiling, as well as now the use of the cameras, how, and the cameras are great, they serve a lot of purpose in both ways, but that the time spent documenting for officers has doubled. Because now we have the camera report, and we have to do their physical report, and then cross-check, and then information off the cameras that has to do with minors, or if an officer's holding his phone up, and he's punching his code, it all has to be adapted. And then Glenn, you could tell me if I'm wrong on this, but they were saying that with the profiling, that any time one of their officers had an encounter with someone, that could have been a violation, and even if they'd been filed, they still have to document it for the state. So it's, you know, when we hear people saying, oh, our officers don't care, you just don't see them out there, well, their administrative workload has doubled with the advent of this thing. And I thought that was really interesting. So out of boyland and to your police force. And she did say that a lot of times, officers at the end of the day, if something minor, they just turn the other way and keep going for it on and over the issue.
Caution, very excited about the new AI stuff that's coming out on video. It's been great, they're able to do their editing in like ten minutes.
I think so.
I mean, sure, something's coming out. It's great. Any other updates?
Did you want to throw anything in?
Sure, I mean, I thought that the art center was really cool, the tour was really great, the setup. They talked about how they acquired it, they talked about how they finance it, revenues, how the town supports it with, they have a real estate transfer assessment, a letter, something to Winter Park, that Winter Park has a one percent for all their sales of homes. They'll support it by that, and they, they support it depending on the year, they went in operational for about a year and a half. Somewhere between forty to sixty percent subsidy. So it's one of the things they, they really stress, and that's really required for funding for these types of art facilities that we've all learned about, was feasibility study is something that's, that's needed, and something that's needed for when you're seeking funding from a bank, or funding from a state granting source. So a feasibility study shows what type of art, art center, if it's performing arts, if it's, if it's creating space, what would be economically supported by the market here in the Fraser Valley, which is interesting, the tourist traffic comes up. So the feasibility study's really interesting, the way that they manage the facility's really interesting. Their building cost for that, that space was estimated at five million in twenty twenty-one, and I think it hit that like seven point two million. It's the first net zero performing arts facility in the country, which is interesting. So it has a solar ray on top, it's one hundred percent electric, it's, it's pretty neat space. Other things that I thought were really interesting, and we locked, you know, it's just a block walk between hotel and the Taccalla Center, the art center. And they have forty-five foot height limitations and ground for commercial in those blocks. They have nice wide sidewalks, some street skating, some bump outs, that felt really cool. Obviously, it was strictly to some degree based on the space we have available on Clayton Court. But it was neat to see what a new subdivision looks like for that. I thought that was really interesting. Had some recent discussions too with Winter Park from that, from that conference about electric bikes that they have available there, that are solar powered, that they use, even throughout the wintertime, which is interesting, for people just getting around off the highway, and somebody can get on the bike, you know, maybe some studded fat tires, and they can actually go down and enjoy getting around town without, without a vehicle. Other things that were interesting is Basalt, the manager there, his name's Ryan Mahoney, he's done a lot of work on reddo, so real estate transfer assessment, where they have actually been able to do that, do that on individual buildings, or for, for people requesting variances, which has been interesting. So me and Ken are kind of diving into that, looking at the research there, so could be a good opportunity. For Fraser, you could typically negotiate a reddo with annexations, but for existing properties, or I'm sorry, for new construction properties, it could be a voluntarily thing done by the developer that can maybe be used as leverage when they're looking at a variance for a property. So just some interesting things that we're looking into that could support a lot of the town's initiatives, including housing shop here.
And you're looking to make it up now?
Yeah.
And it's a voluntary, instead of a little take, it's a voluntary assessment on the development. So if we build it into our code encouraging them, it could be a really nice source, especially if it's a subdivision.
It's just something that we're exploring, but I thought it was kind of interesting. So it's mainly standing space, where they use, they have chairs, they can bring chairs and tables for certain things. I think it's about hundred and twenty-five.
So on the inside by the stage, yeah, it's just about hundred and twenty-five, and then it also goes into a bar area that's like a.
So that it can actually open the walls a little bit and have access to the bar area as well.
But they added, they have the space to add on, controlling the theater setting, it's five hundred.
Okay. How many performances there? I believe the number was like seventy, in the seventies.
How much, how much money did they make?
They make about eight hundred thousand, seven hundred to nine hundred thousand. They've only been around for a year and a half, they're looking forward to this whole year, being fully operational and up and running. So they've been subsidized by the town, but Basalt, forty to sixty percent of revenue, so they're making, let's say, eight hundred thousand in revenues, and a lot of that is based on reservation space for events, weddings, receptions, which can also be, other nice benefits, get design like an amphitheater to be able to be used for those same purposes, simply have the headwater center. The rental space, the music venue revenues, they drive a lot of ticket sales, and the businesses really thrive from those all those different events. So they've actually seen a lot of, a lot of people showing up during like mud seasons, when there's not really anything else to do, you actually, they have a lot of ticket sales, they make a lot of receptions during those shorter seasons, which I thought would be a cool driver for figure. That was a component of it.
I heard a kick in construction lines, they click.
Okay, any other applicants? Leslie will be leaving us soon.
I don't want to. I have to.
Do you want to give her some kudos? She's trying to talk to us this morning. So I, she's moving to Pueblo, and I'll, I'll leave you to talk to her why she's leaving. But we very much appreciate Leslie, she's been a huge part of the clerk's office for short-term rentals, business license, and bringing ordinances.
I think that's one that is gonna crop.
Running and managing the meetings. She's been a big part of.
So is she.
So we appreciate it, Leslie. We'll be sad to see you go.
Yeah, you've been great.
Um, Friday, physically Friday.
Physically in person Friday, she needs to go down sooner to Pueblo for. Physically in person Friday, she needs to go down sooner for Buffalo for.
She'll continue to work for the town probably through the beginning of October.
Well, thank you, Laura.
It's a virtual. Yeah. It'll be great and help.
Yep, it'll be hard to replace.
Tidy things up and whoever comes and fills your position is gonna have a lot easier job than you did.
Yes, they will.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure, for sure.
All the best to you.
Thank you.
Um, other thing that I have is I have seven passes for the Winter Park Film Festival and I have several tickets to the Todd Schlauchy keynote speaker. I think I would like those. He's a cameraman who worked a lot on the revenant. And one other big one, I think it's Transformed or something. Anyway, he's like a ever-known cameraman to some degree, he's gonna be a keynote speaker. I have three passes, you guys can see that. Otherwise, I have seven of yous, super cool, who think he's here. Is anyone here interested, your trustees?
Okay, you're really long, I'm like. And the floppy, floppy.
Bobby.
I don't know how to say. I like movies. Yes. If nobody else.
I, I would have to take three. I'd have to leave. I have to figure out how to.
I won't.
If you, that's why I got there, I can't figure out how to get tickets.
Any other updates?
They can have one.
I would like to say.
Roll it up, Katie. Come on, Katie. You're up.
What, we could do a stay in touch.
What? You're up for the last mention.
Because I'm not gonna.
I moved to Dirk.
Is there any other updates?
I'll be at stack tomorrow.
Can you, can you ask them whether they're only doing half that's job and.
Yeah.
Fraser. Why are they only paying half of the grip?
I don't understand.
Oh, maybe you can buy that one. Thank you, thank you, one minute. Come on, come on.
Yeah.
Okay, any other updates? Motion?
Move to Dirk.
Is there a second?
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thanks, Christine.
Hey, I have a question. Is there some property?
Yep.